Everyone's remote, so.
Good evening and welcome to the October 1, 2024 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Saleem Neese. This evening's hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom. We're also broadcasting live on MITV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome and thanks for joining us tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned off for roll call. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl. Here. Councilmember Jacobson. Councilmember Jacobson is present. Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Wyker?
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Here.
And Mayor Neese?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'll note for the record that councilmembers Androl, Jacobson, Reynolds, and Wyker have all joined us via Zoom.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you've joined us in council chambers, please stand and face the flag. If you join via Zoom, please mute and turn off your video to ensure the US flag is visible.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. It's a second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the City Manager Report, and we welcome Chief of Staff Ali Speitz.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, hold on one second. Technical difficulties. My goodness. Okay. We have the City Manager's Report for Tuesday, October 1, 2024. A couple of updates for City Council and Boards and Commission meetings. Our next City Council meeting will be on Tuesday, October 15. And we also have two meetings coming up for our Boards and Commissions, the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Utility Board, both meeting on Tuesday, October 8, at 5:00 PM. You get to choose. Utilities or Parks and Recreation. A few city updates for you. The city's launched a digital survey to collect information on how the community currently uses Clark and Groveland beaches. We're looking for people to provide input. We're accepting responses until October 22. This input will be combined with other background analysis to inform the scope of the planning process for future improvements at both of these parks. Staff anticipate bringing a recommended planning scope to the City Council in early 2025. You can go to merceraland.gov/cgmp to provide input. The long-anticipated third police modular building was delivered over the weekend, and we are completing installation work throughout the rest of this week. Once the structure assembly and the building envelope is complete, contractors will begin the electrical, data, water, and sewer connections, followed by the installation of access control and securities infrastructure. And finally, furniture. We're hoping to have it ready for staff to begin moving in by the last week of October. Work is continuing on the Luther Burbank Boiler Building Project. The mezzanine and stairway railings have been installed. Some parts need to be modified, so the completion may be delayed a few weeks. The roll-up door for the concession stand and the water heaters for the restrooms have both been installed. And the chimney cap fabrication is complete and should be delivered and installed soon. Substantial completion of this project is expected in about two weeks. Pickleball courts at Luther Burbank Park. Yesterday, Northwest Asphalt placed the second lift of asphalt pavement, and today, the team conducted a flood test to check out the court planetary planet planet. I don't know. That's a new word for me. And drainage. Drainage performed as planned, and the team found a few ridges along the paving seams, which is typical for sport court paving. Next up, Field Turf will complete other items, including installing new drains, building the new access path, and grading the South Hillside. We anticipate the courts will be playable for pickleball later this month with temporary striping, and then the final surface and markings will be installed next spring. Updates are available at merceraland.gov/lbpcourts. Next slide. Eightieth Avenue, Southeast pedestrian improvements. Our contractor is working between Southeast 30th and Southeast 32nd Streets along the east side of Eightieth Avenue. New concrete curbs have been poured near Southeast 32nd Street, and new electrical conduit has been installed for street lighting. This week, crews will continue with sidewalk grading, and then pouring the new concrete should start in about two weeks. Work along this along Eightieth is expected to continue through the end of this year. The King County Metro Sewer Project is still going on, but they're getting closer. The county's asphalt subcontractor Lakeside Industries recently completed the paving of the I-90 Trail from Luther Burbank South Parking Lot to Shorewood Drive. Shoulder restoration and landscaping work along the trail is wrapping up, and this section of the path should fully reopen to pedestrian and bicycle traffic later this month. Comprehensive Plan. The 2024 City Council Draft Comprehensive Plan is now available for public review on Let's Talk. This important document will help shape the future of Mercer Island for the next 20 years, and we invite you to share your feedback. You can send comments on the draft comprehensive plan elements to comp-plan@merceraland.gov by Thursday, October 31, 2024. Your input will be compiled and included in the City Council packet for the November 4 meeting. We look forward to hearing your thoughts and working to plan the future for our community. More information is available on Let's Talk. Join our Planning Commission. We are still looking for applicants for the Planning Commission with the term beginning in January 1, 2025. We're looking for two resident laypersons, one resident paid practitioner, and two non-resident paid practitioners. We're accepting applications online through October 25. If you would like to learn more, you can go to merceraland.gov/BC. A few upcoming events. This Saturday, October 5, at 10:30 AM, is the annual Mercer Island High School Homecoming Parade, and they will be taking it will be taking place in the town center with street closures from 32nd Street, Southeast 32nd Street, down 77th to the Greta Hackett Outdoor Sculpture Gallery, from approximately 10:15 to 11:30 AM. Women's Day Out will be held at the Community Center on Sunday, October 20, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce and on the east side have partnered to host Women's Day Out. This event brings local businesses together for a day to nourish your mind, body, and soul. Enjoy mindful movement sessions, learn stress management techniques, visit our self-care vendors, and more. For more information, visit the Mercer Island Chamber. And some good news. We found out this week that we have been awarded a grant from King County Best Starts for Kids. This is the Positive Family Connections Grant Award for approximately $288,000. We are one of only 11 agencies to receive this award out of over 100 applicants. This grant will allow youth and family services to increase support for island parents and families and continue the implementation of the ParentingMercerIsland.org web-based parenting tool developed over the last two years. The program will bring parent support groups, parent-focused town hall events, and elevate the connection between strong parenting and healthy youth. We are incredibly proud of the work we are doing to provide much-needed mental health services and counseling to our kids, and we're really excited about this grant. Family Movie Fun Night. Night fun. Family movie night fun. Fun night, night fun. 124 people registered for last Friday's Family Movie Night, and they all watched Kung-Fu Panda 4. People brought blankets and chairs, enjoyed popcorn and treats, played in the game room, and hung out in the lobby. A very big thank you to Mercer Island Martial Arts for sponsoring this event. The next Family Movie Night is scheduled for Friday, December 13. Staff is currently arguing about the best family-friendly holiday movie to show. You can send your input to mi-parks@merceraland.gov to try and sway the selection. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item except those requiring a public hearing, any quasi-judicial matters or campaign-related matters. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the Council may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they register with the City Clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the Council as a whole, not to individual councilor's staff members. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the City Council may be requested to leave the meeting. If your appearance pertains to the last item of regular business regarding ballot measures, please limit your comments to the issue in question, which is whether or not the City Council should take a position on ballot measures at its October 15 City Council meeting. Expanding your comments to encourage voters to support or oppose the ballot measures themselves will not be permitted during appearances because it violates state laws against the use of public facilities for campaigning. Please speak audibly. State your name and city of residence for the record. There'll be a timer on the screen. You'll have three minutes to speak. When your time is ended, I'll thank you for your comments and move to the next item, next speaker, next item of business. City Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker tonight is Addie Smith.
Welcome.
Last week, I was cut off before I could finish the statements that I was making. So I want to kind of wrap that up and present again in the next hearing. So if you were listening last week, just add this to what I said, and I also posted it on to social media. So however, if you really care about the citizens of Mercer Island and the citizens of the state of Washington, having to pay a settlement, which they will to me for damages for the years, five years now, of time that I have lost in this hate crime attack, you will want to take the time to listen to the hearings in the case, case number 9Z093006. Start with hearing day, August 9, or you can start in 2019 if you wish. But on August 9, 2019, Judge Gregory states, "It is so important for you to have an attorney." Listen to all the hearings, as I've instructed to the public on social media. Jeff Gregory is dishonest. He's not a truth-teller. Don't believe the faces of some of these council members who want to appear to console. It's a facade. All of these council members in 2019 received my emails. Benson Wong was the mayor. All of these people were council members, with the exception of the one next to the current mayor on my right with the dark hair, not the blonde with the blue shirt. Judge Gregory stood before several of you weeks ago to present the status of the municipal court stating that anyone is welcome in his courtroom. There is no way for anyone to know the lies he was told, he has told, by sitting in one hearing. You'd have to come to them all. You'd also have to be present at the previous hearings for that particular person. You won't know that he's violating the rights, my rights, to an attorney by sitting in one hearing on any one particular day. Judge Gregory has allowed me to appear for hearings via telephone. When he agreed to the motion to withdraw for Meredith Hutchison, he ordered me to appear in person and refused to provide an attorney. I couldn't afford an attorney in April, and the day before, the municipal court and the building closed to asbestos, and I can't afford to come to Kirkland. Judge Gregory will ensure that this city and state will be responsible for the damages over the past five years it has caused for me not having a job or being able to start a business. Judge Gregory and Blakely Warbinton are violating the law, and these city council members, they report to these city council members. These city council members may act like they can't do anything about the judges and the prosecutor, but they can. They sign the checks. They write the contracts with the city attorney. They can do something about it, and they won't. Vote them out.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Callie Rodolphy.
Good evening. I'm Callie Rodolphy. I've been a resident here on Mercer Island for 30 years, and I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters. First of all, I want to thank you all for the leadership, your leadership on energy efficiency, adopting clean energy, and conserving our green spaces. Especially appreciate that you adopted greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, and you also developed plans for climate action to benefit the citizens of Mercer Island. These efforts are going to require investments in the future, resources that will be devastated if Initiative 2117 passes. I urge the City Council to adopt a resolution and to discuss and apparently consider that matter. I'm not sure if I can tell you to oppose it or not based on the comments of the mayor, but it's on the November ballot, so I encourage you to consider the issue expeditiously. Sounds like your next meeting is on the 15th, and that would be in time to at least adopt a position that may affect the outcome. The League of Women Voters opposes Initiative 2117. If it's passed, the initiative would prevent the state from achieving our greenhouse gas reduction targets that were set in 2020 and which are necessary to defer and deter further climate action impacts. The state would lose a significant funding source for implementing programs such as the funds available through the Climate Commitment Act, and those support clean transportation, clean buildings, clean energy development, siting and transmission, and more. And for those of you that aren't aware, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that studies issues very carefully and with a priority on informed voters. Thank you for your time and for considering Initiative 2117.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sue Stewart.
Yes, I'm Sue Stewart. I've been a resident of Mercer Island for 50-some years. I'm coming to you today as a 17-year pea patch renter in Luther Burbank Park. Many gardeners have returned for a decade, but one of my neighbors has been, has hit 40 years now. We had hoped we could grandfather-in our larger plots, but it is against last year's brand-new Parks Commission rule of one patch per household, starting in 2025. In hopes of staying, we have initiated a petition and shared our names and emails to the park staff, who will not grandfather-in, and in November, they will start the process of whittling down long-timers areas. So tonight, after I leave, I will be forwarding our petition to grandfather-in larger areas to the Mercer Island Parks Commissioners in hopes that they might amend their rules and let us stay. Right now, there are just 10 of us named. We're not spring chickens. There is already an attrition rate, but we feel we know how much work our patches take. Our gardens are productive, and working them keeps us healthy. Today, at the patch, a colleague insisted that I share that we longtime gardeners are ambassadors to the newcomers. That was sweet, and it is our happy place. Some numbers. In 2023, there were seven plots nearby that were never utilized, so the waiting list gardeners did not accept them. This last summer, no patches were rented due to the water issue, but I just counted a dozen plots that now sit vacant. In my last meeting with Dave Sederland, he was leaning towards creating half-sized plots. If so, that could allow more than 20 new gardeners if the waiting list people accept those areas. Unlike our areas, the abandoned plots are very weedy and not very attractive. You, as council members, are the ultimate land-use deciders. That is why I am here, to soften you up to the idea, if I can. We respect the Parks Commissioners and our park staff, so we are not demanding, but we are humbling asking that new rules be utilized prospectively, not retroactively with evictions to old-timers, but instead, if we could be, please be grandfathered in. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker tonight is Carolyn Boatsman.
I know.
Greetings, councilmembers.
Welcome.
Everything in order there, Andrea?
Go ahead.
Yes. My name is Carolyn Boatsman. I'm a 38-year resident of Mercer Island. Tonight, I'm speaking in favor of adopting a resolution against statewide initiatives 2066 and 2117. The two initiatives, if passed, will deal a blow to the city's ability and the ability of every participant in K4C to meet greenhouse goal, greenhouse gas reduction goals.
Quite of order, Mr. Mayor. This speaker is bypassing the injunctions you had on going beyond the subject of whether to put on the agenda or not, as did Ms. Rodolphy.
Okay. Ms. Boatsman, I would ask you, did you hear the rules as I opened public hearing tonight, or public comment tonight?
Perhaps I need clarification, please.
Okay. I'll ask the city attorney to clarify for you.
Mr. Mayor, to repeat the rules, the rules are, under the state law against use of public facilities for campaigning and to support or oppose a ballot measure, the appearances tonight should be limited to the issue in question at the with the last item of regular business, which is whether or not the council should take a unified position or a position as a body on the resolutions, the two ballot measures that are before you tonight.
Any questions, Ms. Boatsman?
I guess I'm not quite clear. So I cannot speak in favor of them taking such an action to adopt such a resolution. Opposed?
So we rule, as I read it, was if your appearance pertains to the last item of regular business regarding ballot measures, please limit your comments to the issue in question, which is whether or not the City Council should take a position on the ballot measures at its October 15 City Council meeting. Expanding your comments to encourage voters to support or oppose the ballot measures themselves will not be permitted during appearances because it violates the state laws against the use of public facilities or campaigning.
Okay, so I'm not advocating anything I'm trying to tell voters to do. I'm trying to encourage my city council to adopt a resolution.
Okay, so Ms. Boatsman, I'm going to reset your time, and I'll let you try again. Okay, we're going to take it back to three minutes.
I have to say, I don't understand this. So I don't know what aspect of my testimony is out of order. If somebody could help me with that, I would really appreciate it.
Your opening sentence contained it, so just skip your opening sentence.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add.
All right.
Okay, one moment, Ms. Boatsman.
Where's my time right now?
One moment, Ms. Boatsman. City Attorney?
The speaker cannot advocate for voters to vote in favor or against the ballot measure. That's the key. There should not be any advocacy on how to vote on the ballot measures during appearances.
All right. I have not violated that. I have not advocated that voters do anything. I am advocating that the City Council adopt a resolution. So if I'm not, if that's all right, I'd like to continue.
Your time is running.
Okay. I sent the City Council a graphic from the final report by Cascadia Consulting Group estimating the amount of our goals reached by the implementation of state laws and programs. The Washington Energy Code that would be repealed by Initiative 2066 does not prohibit natural gas. It requires a high degree of energy efficiency in new construction that may cause new development to choose electricity instead. The wedge diagram which I've sent the council shows the reduction in greenhouse gas reduction from the state building regulations that would no longer accrue based upon repeal. It also shows that nearly half of the greenhouse gas reduction to be accomplished by the city and residents of Mercer.
Okay. City Clerk, have we lost Ms. Boatsman?
She appears frozen. She's still in the meeting, but she is frozen.
Councilmember Androl, I see you have your hand raised. I'm going to recognize this time if you would like to make some comments.
It was the same comment that Councilmember Jacobson made, which is that the speaker and the second speaker seem to have be putting the city in some jeopardy of a violation of state law.
Ms. Boatsman's back, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. Ms. Boatsman, you have two minutes and eight seconds remaining. You're on mute.
Thank you. The wedge diagram which I've sent the council shows the reduction in greenhouse gas greenhouse gas reduction from the state building regulations, which would no longer accrue based on repeal. It also shows that nearly half of the greenhouse reduction to be accomplished by the city and its residents pertains to electrification of buildings, to decarbonization of buildings. The graph also shows the greenhouse gas reduction expected from the Climate Commitment Act. Mercer Island receives significant funding from the proceeds of the CCA via its participation in Energy Smart East Side Program, along with other east side cities, which have received two grants, in addition to PSC funding that also comes from the Climate Commitment Act, towards helping Mercer Island residents install heat pumps in their home, driving down greenhouse gas emissions on Mercer Island. This is how the CCA is supposed to work. Limit greenhouse gas emissions, require payment for emissions, pass on the funding to efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions statewide. There is no carbon trading going on with the Climate Commitment Act. It really is a cap-and-invest program, and we are the recipients of this investment. So I recommend the city should be against the two initiatives.
Okay, all right. I'm going to have to answer your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. As there's no further appearances, we now move to our next item of regular business, which is approval of the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda contains AB 6544, the September 20, 2024 payroll certification, certification of claims for September 13 and 20, 2024, City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting Minutes of September 17, 2024, AB 6545 Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation Number 347, AB 6546 Arbor Day Proclamation, Proclamation Number 348, AB 6547 Indigenous Peoples' Day Proclamation Number 349, AB 6549 Agreement with MISD for Fuel Purchase, AB 6527 Letter of Support for Improvements AB 6527 Letter of Support for Improvements to PSC Low Income Utility Assistance Program. Council, is there anybody that wishes to pull any item off of consent tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
I move that we remove AB 6527 from the consent agenda.
So pulled. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus AB 6527?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by deputy mayor, sorry, councilmember Weinberg and deputy mayor Rosenbaum. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda is approved as amended and read. And our first item of regular business is AB 6527, Letter of Support for Improvements to PSC Low Income Utility Assistance Programs. And I just have a quick motion, deputy mayor Rosenbaum.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table further consideration of AB 6527.
Okay, moved by deputy mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Mayor Nice. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any discussion, city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
And councilmember Androl. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion to table is approved. Our next item of regular business is AB 6548, the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, House Bill 1220 Affordable Housing Target Capacity Options. And we welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas and Senior Planner Adam Zach. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Jeff Thomas with CPD, Adam Zach, our senior planner, will be joining me for this item tonight. Adam has a short presentation that he's going to walk the council through here over the next number of minutes. And then we'll certainly be available for any questions the council may have that we'll do our best to try and answer. And the objective for this evening is to hopefully get some direction from the council on next steps on this particular matter. So with that, Adam, go ahead and bring up the presentation and we'll get rolling.
Right. Thank you, Jeff. So as Jeff just mentioned, we're looking for, we're here tonight to ask for direction on four topics. The first direction that we'll be looking for, the first direction request we have tonight is for you to select two, from two different options for increasing the development capacity in the town center. These were all labeled as options A and B in the agenda bill. The second direction request we'll be asking for tonight is direction on an affordable housing percentage. So this will be the percentage of total housing units in the town center that would be required to be affordable in new development. The third request, direction request 3A, is to select the AMI affordable level that those required units must be affordable at for rental housing. And then 3B is for that affordability level for ownership housing. And then the final request that we would like some direction on is the optional 80th Avenue corridor that was outlined in the agenda bill. So I'll walk you through each of those requests here shortly. As a reminder, the way that we, how we ended up here is during the comprehensive plan update, the city is required to comply with the House Bill 1220 that was passed by the Washington State Legislature in 2021. This includes, the House Bill 1220 established some affordable housing targets that we need to plan for in our comprehensive plan. And in order to accommodate those, those affordable housing targets, staff has identified that we need to increase development capacity in multifamily and mixed-use zones by at least 143 units during our comprehensive plan periodic review. And that multifamily and mixed-use component of it really was directed by the Department of Commerce guidance that we received for complying with House Bill 1220. If you'll remember, in January of this year, the council, after reviewing the findings that we were, had a capacity deficit, you, the city council, directed that we look at addressing that 143-unit capacity deficit in the town center by either increasing capacity in the town center and/or increasing capacity in the commercial office zone. Then in September of this year, when the coun- when the comprehensive plan update made its way back to the city council, during those deliberations on the housing element, we, or the council, further narrowed the, the search to just town center. So the direction is now to accommodate that deficit only in town center rather than considering the commercial office zone. In the agenda bill, in Agenda Bill 6548, there were two options presented for increasing development capacity in the town center. The first of those options, option A, is increasing the development capacity by adding one floor to the maximum building height throughout the town center zone. That's the area outlined in pink on the map on the screen here. And if we were to do that, so for example, all of the TC3 zone would go from being, from a three-story maximum to a four-story maximum. What we found in analyzing the development capacity that this would create is this would increase development capacity by roughly 152 units. And so it would add enough development capacity to address the shortfall identified earlier in the year. The second option presented in the agenda bill, option B, would increase the maximum building height in some of the subareas of the town center and leave others unchanged. The first area that the maximum building height would be increased is the TC5 and TC4 plus area, which is the area outlined in purple on the map to the right. Under option B, the areas outlined in purple, the maximum building height would increase from five stories to seven. Then the second part of this option is to increase the maximum building height in TC4, which is the area outlined in orange on the map. And that would increase the maximum building height in that area from four stories to five stories. And what we found is, in analyzing the capacity here, is that the, the development capacity in total in the town center would increase by about 237 units. So this would also provide enough development capacity to address the capacity deficit found. So the first piece of direction that we'll be looking for after my presentation is whether option A or option B is the preferred approach for development capacity. The second direction that we're asking for is direction on the required percentage of total units required to be affordable in new development in the town center. Currently, the code requires any new construction of a building taller than three stories in the town center must include 10% of its units as affordable housing units. And in, in the agenda bill, we analyzed the potential of increasing that affordability percentage from 10% to 15%. So in the, the, the alternative, the proposed alternative would, any new construction in the town center would be required to have 15% of its units be affordable as opposed to 10%. So we're asking the council to give us direction on whether the 10% is preferred or the 15% or another percentage if desired. The third direction, piece of direction that we're looking for is related to the affordability requirement for those units that are required to be affordable. Currently, under the existing code, any development that's taller than four stories and includes, includes residential units, is required to provide affordable units at 60% of the, or units that are affordable at 60% of the area median income. And alternative to that, we could increase or deepen the affordability required for those units to 50% AMI as opposed to 60%. So we're looking for whether the council wants to pursue a deeper affordability requirement for those rental units. Similarly, direction request 3B would be for owner-occupied units. Currently, in the town center, those affordable units, or in order to qualify as affordable units, owner-occupied units in new development must be affordable at 90% of the area median income in town center. And so we'd like your direction as to whether or not to keep that 90% or possibly make that more deeply affordable at like the 80% range there. For, and that would be for owner-occupied units in the town center. The fourth or fifth piece of direction that we're looking for from the council tonight is regarding an optional additional capacity buffer. We're looking for direction as to whether or not the council would like staff to further analyze this area for potential rezone. And this, if we were to look at adding some additional capacity in this area highlighted in green, that could help the city in the future demonstrate that, or it could prevent the potential for being required to add more capacity in a later process. So currently, the city will go through a five-year progress report with the state and the county in 2029. And a big part of that progress report will be looking at how we've, how the city has progressed on achieving its goals. If we were to add a little bit more capacity, that could help when we get to that five-year check-in, demonstrate that we're, that we still have capacity to meet our needs. The agenda bill included a table that illustrated kind of how development capacity potentially could get used as new development occurs, kind of pushing us back into the same kind of position that we're in today, needing to upzone or add, add development capacity rather. So either at the five-year review or at our next periodic review. I see Jeff jumped on this, the camera here. Did you have something to add, Jeff?
I've been on the camera the whole time. I did unmute, though. Yeah, I, I just wanted to take a quick moment to touch a little bit further on this. In working through these options, A and B, when we started putting that, that running tab together that's in table one of your agenda bill, it became apparent that it wasn't going to take very much to put us right back in, you know, a similar position to what we're in today, or even a slightly worse position than what we're in today in a very short amount of time. And the reason for that is when these private developments occur, they're adding X number of market rate units. And then, you know, a subset of that is the, the number of affordable units at the, the current 10% rate or perhaps something a little bit more than that if the council chooses to turn that dial here this evening for future developments. And what, what the real interest here is, is not having a little bit of sustainability here in not being in the negative constantly. We, we've had actually this discussion at a previous meeting some time ago now, but kind of yo-yoing back between being in the positive, being in the negative, having the capacity to meet our affordable housing target, not having it and just bouncing back and forth by looking at some different options. And this is certainly, and, you know, an alternative that isn't going to happen instantly, this, this request here that's on the screen. But if the council is interested in this and is interested in creating a little bit of capacity sustainability over a period of time, we could perhaps get to that 2029 check-in in good shape. And we could hopefully avert any mandated actions that may come down from above, whether that's at the county level, the regional level, or the state level, for looking at our capacity of that snapshot in time and saying, you know, hey, you're in the deficit, you know, you're gonna need to do X, Y, or Z. We, we want to control our own destiny as much as possible here. We don't know what the future is going to hold and what kind of additional legislation is going to be coming down over the next few years. So I think being the best stewards possible of our, our available capacity and, you know, being open and upfront about that is a good thing. So with that, Adam, I'll let you finish up here the next slide or two.
Great, thanks, Jeff. So the agenda bill included a recommended motion, and then I believe Jeff emailed an additional recommended motion last night to address, to get us the direction on those decision points that we've, or direction points that we've touched on tonight. So the first, the first direction point that we talked about with option A or B, that's highlighted here in the first highlight. So if, if you were to make this motion, you can select which, which of those options is preferred. The second decision point in terms of the percentage of affordable housing that would be required, that would be the second highlighted point. Then 3A and 3B, the AMI affordability level percentage, that would be at the second, or sorry, the third and fourth highlighted section of the recommended motion. And then the final piece, we were just talking about along 80th Avenue there, the optional additional capacity, that could be addressed by this second motion here. Once we have the direction from the council, the next steps for this project would be the staff will prepare an interim ordinance based on the, on the direction that we get tonight. And we would bring that back for a public hearing and a first reading on November 19. And all of that would then kind of link back up with our larger comprehensive plan update that we've been working on the last month with the council.
And Mayor, if I may, just before you start to take councilmember questions, if I could just take one more quick minute here, Adam, can you go back one slide, please? These recommended motions, council, in, just in the event that you have not had a chance to check your city email in the last 24 hours, these were sent out at approximately a little after 5:00 PM last evening. And the first motion is an amended motion from what was in your packet. And that was prepared to make sure that we were also addressing ownership affordability as not just the rental unit affordability, which was the original motion that was in your packet. And then the second motion is new, and, and again, this is an optional motion for the council. It simply states that if you'd like to look into that 80th corridor a little bit further, you could direct staff to do that and bring, bring it back to city council at some point in 2025 for additional discussion. With that, Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation, so we'll turn it back over to you and the council.
Thank you for that. While you're here, do you have a slide that, maybe I saw it, missed it in there, a table of the AMI-banded units that we have the target under 1220? Do you have that unit count?
It was actually attached to my email last night. We can dig that up for the council here and get that on the screen in short order.
Okay, if you could work on that, councilmember Reynolds.
That was actually gonna be my first question, but I'll ask my second question instead, which is, with regards to the 10% or 15% limit, I'm interested in the, the practicality viability of that. Are there examples of other nearby communities that have built units at the 15% level without government subsidy? And if so, has anybody done it at a higher level, like a 20% or 25% requirement without, without government subsidy?
Yeah. What I can tell you is that the Arch member cities, including Mercer Island, have been working with a consultant that Arch has hired here recently. working with a consultant that Arch has hired here recently to help its member cities work through some of these potential feasibility scenarios. And what we found in having Arch's consultant work with Mercer Island here recently is that fifteen percent number does, as a standalone turn-the-dial requirement, with the, the option B, the seven stories, the fifteen percent does, even with interest rates where they're at currently, and, you know, in the process of falling, it looks like, fifteen percent does come pretty close to a standalone feasibility for a seven-story project on Mercer Island. With the lesser stories, so the, like the, going from the four to the five, that was also part of option B, not quite there just yet with interest rates in terms of feasibility at the fifteen percent level, but we also did not, you know, we, we ran, or the consultant, not, Adam and I didn't run it, the consultant did, ran scenarios that when you start to look at other tools that are in the how, the draft housing element that the city may choose to deploy at some future point in time, those tools will help achieve a feasibility at a lower height over time, assuming that those tools, or at least some of those tools, again, are developed and deployed at some point, so.
Anything else? Councilmember Reynolds?
I have another question, but I'll wait my turn.
Okay. Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes, my question has to do with slide number seven. Can I, or if you would mind bringing that back to life?
Yeah.
Adam?
Let me pull that up. This slide here?
Yes, that's the one. And the basis for my question is something that happened to Arch some years ago, and it had to do with ownership, I believe, and perhaps occupancy. I don't, I reckon, my recollection is imprecise on that. But the, in terms of particularly the ownership part of it, and to some degree, I'm just looking at it both ways, whether it's rental or ownership. Is it correct to assume that the AMI of the person who's going to either rent or occupy is determined at the time that the, that individual signs the papers?
Yeah, Councilmember Jacobson, I am vaguely familiar with the matter that you're bringing up that occurred with Arch. My recollection is that it was regarding ownership units. And it had to do with, I, I really don't want to speak out of turn with this and say something that's incorrect, but I, my recollection is it, it did, it did involve future transactions of units that were occurring, and there was protocol that needed to be reinforced, I guess, and cleaned up. And my understanding is Arch did take those steps to remedy those issues that were brought up at that point in time. So that's, that's my recollection of the situation from a number of years ago. To answer your question directly, yes, I do believe that the income verification would occur prior to the transaction occurring. I believe it's always intended to occur that way. And again, there may have been some problems there in the past which have been remedied here in more recent years.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other, I have several other questions, but I would, if, one very short request would obviate the need to ask all those questions, because I don't really bear directly on any of these motions, if I'm permitted to make a request.
Carry on.
I'd just like to understand somewhat better about how AMI stuff gets enforced over time, if at all. And so Jeff, if you're, one of your staff at some point before too long could make themselves available, I've got a bunch of questions, but I don't think they're going to edify any of my colleagues here. So if that's possible. The other thing I would say is I commend you guys for keeping all the balls in the air and seeing if you can get more balls in the air at the same time. I appreciate the difficulty of that, that exercise. So I'm all for the idea of having, as you used to say in the Navy, anchor out to windward in case somebody changes their rules.
Sure.
That's it from my mouth, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
I think my other question, I want to wait until we see the slide they're about to put up, if they are going to put that up.
Yeah, I have the table if that's, yeah, here, let me share that. Is, this is the table you were looking for, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes. So my, my question essentially comes down to this. Let's say we adopt, just to keep the math easy, we adopt option B, and we keep things at ten percent, and we don't adopt, we don't do the additional capacity on option four. That's going to create presumably two hundred and thirty-seven times ten percent, or about twenty-four units of affordable housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, roughly, in the new capacity.
Good. So that seems like it pales in comparison to the four hundred and eighty-eight, or whatever that is there. So what's the vision for what happens next?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. I mean, that's a, that's a good, that ties in with the other work that we've been doing on the comprehensive plan really well. So there, there are a bunch of other policies in the comprehensive plan housing element that talk about additional actions the city will explore or consider doing over the lifetime of the plan. This would include the fee in lieu of housing option, exploring some of the other levers and dials that we have available to, to us, to encourage some of, some more construction of affordable units. And the idea is that over the, over the lifetime of the plan, as we implement that housing element and take those additional actions, we'll be moving ever closer towards achieving the, the target here. So the first step is to make sure that we have the zoning capacity, that's that option A or B. And then the additional steps that follow on implementing the housing element over the next several years helps get us further to that four eighty-eight number that you pointed out, or the other affordability numbers in this tape.
That, that's helpful. May I ask a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
So I'm thinking about option four here for adding additional capacity, and I'd like you to help me to think about this, whether I'm thinking correctly. If we approve option four, then we've created an additional, I don't remember what the additional capacity was, number was, but some number of units that will, will get us ten percent or fifteen percent of that, which would still be far short of the four eighty-eight unless some other things happen, like we talked about a moment ago. Would it make more sense to not approve the additional capacity, to give other options time to work, and evaluate what's really happening and what we're really succeeding with, and then at a later time, increase the additional capacity in those later zones with a, an even stronger requirement, a twenty or twenty-five percent requirement, that we might not be prepared to do so, might not be prepared to do that?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me take a swing at responding to that. It's a, it's a good question to think about. So just a little bit more about the, the Eightieth Corridor, that's not something that is going to be approved here in the short term. Because the situation with that corridor is that it's part, that sub, we'll call it a subarea for the purposes of discussion here this evening, it's part of the broader zoning district of the TC three zone. So what we would do is if the council is interested in having additional discussion about that area, that's what we would bring back in 2025, some additional information, have a, you know, a work session type discussion about it. And then that would need to go through the dockinging process in a future year, and it would then, you know, go through a rezone process, a city-initiated rezone process at a future point in time. So even if the majority of you this evening think that that's a worthy idea to, you know, continue to look at, to transact that into different zoning than exists there today, you know, we're, we're going to be looking at, we could be looking at twenty-six, twenty-two six, twenty-two seven, so it's going to be a few years down the road anyway, to go through the, all the steps that would need to get from today to there. And you're right, a lot can happen over the next couple of years, and that's something we can continue to monitor, and obviously, we're going to continue to discuss it with the council, to keep you apprised of, you know, what's transacting at the state level, what else is happening at the regional level and so forth, and keeping you up to date on, you know, the numbers here locally on Mercer Island. So again, it's the pleasure of the council. If, if you'd like us to do a little work on it here in the shorter term and come back and have an additional discussion about it, in 2025, we're happy to do that. If the council decides you'd like to wait a little bit, Adam and I will be here to remind you of, you know, where it is and where we're at with it. So it's, 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 it's really, I don't think we can go wrong this evening, and I don't think we could go wrong either way with whatever decision the council wants to make.
I'm very glad to hear you'll still be here in a few years. I'm going to hold you to that. The, the other, I just want to confirm, the option A and B, I take it would be considerably faster than that expanded capacity. We could do that in a shorter time frame?
Option A or, the option A or B would be effective twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
To be GMA compliant and to, you know, part of that twelve-twenty package, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, it's, this is a plan that we got to get on the runway tonight, and we got a long night ahead of us, so I'm going to make a motion, and then we'll just look for amendments to see if people want to get away from where the staff proposal is going to get us. So I'm going to move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance containing interim development regulations for public hearing consideration on November nineteen, twenty twenty-four, incorporating option B, an adjustment of affordable housing requirement to fifteen percent and an AMI of fifty percent for rental units and an AMI of eighty percent for ownership units. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. I'll speak to it just briefly. You've seen the, the twelve-twenty targets and the two bans that we know that we can, we sense that we can have some effect with, with the height bonus, or the eighty percent AMI and the fifty percent AMI. Four hundred and eighty-eight on the eighty, eighty percent AMI might lead someone to believe that we should be pushing the throttle closer to those units, but I have heard and had discussions with other mayors in the region that with subsidies and, and funding through Microsoft and through Amazon's housing funds, that there is development contemplated at a hundred percent, eighty percent AMI units. And so there, there are going to be some things in the marketplace that are not free-market principles, but do have other forces behind them that can help us get to the eighty percent AMI units. Eighty percent AMI is still a pretty lofty number in terms of salary and earnings in the region. And so trying to direct the rental units and the fifty percent AMI ban to the extent that we can achieve those through these greater height incentives, to me, really speaks to the spirit of what House Bill twelve-twenty is trying to do, and what our target, AMI target bans have us trying to achieve. At the five-year check-in, you know, being able to go in there with this kind of capacity and with these types of targets into our bonus incentives, I think it gives us good ground to say that we did try. Adding the Eightieth Corridor would be another thing that I'll be supportive of, because going into the five-year check-in with that extra capacity is truly going to be a tailwind for us. We're not going to want to argue that we didn't achieve our goals because there were points in time in the five-year period that we didn't have the capacity that was required. So I'm going to support that as well, and I'll open it up for council. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify that the first percent you said was fifteen, one-five?
One-five, yes, ma'am. All right. Councilmember Weinberg?
So when looking at options A and B, the concern that comes to mind is concurrency. And when we significantly increase the allowed height for an area and it redevelops, then there's a greater need for water and sewer and power and traffic, and the ability to, to move vehicles around. I was wondering if I could ask Director Thomas to comment on the concurrency differences between options A and B, and is there one that would likely have a greater impact to our ability to update the utilities or the infrastructure I was just mentioning than the other?
Yeah. Good question, Councilmember Weinberg. The, the net yield, as Adam had reviewed earlier, they're, they're in similar range. Option B is slightly higher in terms of the additional capacity that will be added. Adam, do you have those numbers off the top of your head again? They were both in the two hundreds, I believe.
Option B would add two hundred and thirty-seven units of capacity, and option A would add a hundred and fifty-two units.
Yeah. So we're, we're somewhere in the seventy, seventy-five unit delta between the two options. So the difference there is relatively minor when you look at the overall size of the island and certainly the town center, but we would definitely make sure that we're correlating our ability to provide infrastructure and services to, you know, whatever number capacity that we will be undertaking here, whether it's tonight, December thirty-first, or at some point in the future as well.
Thank you. Follow-up question? So my understanding is that with option B, we would have a greater concentration of more height at the northern half of the town center. With option A, we'd have an increase in height that's less concentrated but across town center, essentially. And so my perception, let me know if this is correct, would be that with option A, there would be a need for updating the utilities and the infrastructure I was talking about across town center, but it wouldn't be as acute. Whereas with option B, there would be a more acute need for the upgrade to utilities and infrastructure in the northern half, where the greater height would be located. Is, is that a correct summary of the differences between the two?
You know, I would use the word evaluation. I am not a utility providing expert or an engineer by any stretch of imagination, so I would certainly, you know, a more accurate answer would be provided by, you know, somebody else other than yours truly here. However, I would say that an evaluation would need to ensue in either scenario to make sure that we are check and balancing the current city infrastructure with, we may find that there may not be, or there may only be minor infrastructure needs in either scenario. We don't, we don't exactly know that one way or the other, but that, that check and balance does need to be done to make sure that we are keeping all rolling in the same direction with our, our utilities and our utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
I just want to add real quick, this, anyone watching at home, this might seem like a quick, quick discussion, but I want to add a little color here that there has been hours and hours and hours of analysis done by the staff on some of these decisions in terms of, you know, the options here that get us closest and, and help us achieve the goals under HP twelve-twenty. So I, I think this motion gets us in a, in a good spot, and I encourage everyone to support it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Not seeing any other discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Or Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Androw?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Next, council, is there a motion to direct staff to further evaluate an optional additional capacity buffer in the TC three subarea along Eightieth Avenue southeast, northeast, north of Southeast Thirty-first Street, and bring this matter back to the city council for further discussion in 2025?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Any discussion? Councilmember Wein, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
I need to raise my hand, go ahead. No, go ahead. I, no, go ahead, you call it in first.
Uh, real quick, uh, yeah, you know, I think we covered some of this before, but I think, uh, studying this additional capacity will give us a, uh, a better idea of, of having that capacity going forward into the, the next check-in in twenty-twenty-nine.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, or sorry, Councilmember Weinberg?
Yeah. Uh, so in the packet, we were saying that this option, uh, had two different, uh, possible courses, one was to increase by fi- uh, up to five stories, the other one was to increase to seven stories. My understanding is that the current wording in the motion does not specify, but says come back with, with, to us with options for increasing it.
That's correct.
So we're not specifying, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jacobson?
Well, I'm all for this, because I think, uh, given the history of the past few years with what the legislature does with housing and its infinite wisdom, quote unquote, um, I think it's much, a much better idea to know where our old cards are and what they are, since I'm in favor of going to vote for it.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Not seeing any other discussion, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
I heard, I saw you say aye, but I didn't hear it.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB sixty-five forty-two, the financial status update in second quarter twenty-twenty-four and budget amending ordinance, and we welcome Finance Director Matt Mourning.
Good evening, Mayor Neese, members of the council, and City Manager Bond. Uh, tonight, I'm going to introduce, uh, our close colleague, Ben Schumacher, financial analyst, he is going to walk you through the second quarter financial status update for twenty-twenty-four.
Good evening, City Council, go ahead and share my screen here. Uh, just gotta, can I get a verbal confirmation that everyone can see that?
Can see it, but it's not quite in the right mode.
Oh, it is not in the right mode. There we go, that should be the right one.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Um, so good evening, City Council, like Matt said, my name is Ben Schumacher, your financial analyst here at the City Mercer Island, uh, may have to mute at times, excuse me as I'm getting over a cough, uh, from the weekend, a nasty cold, uh, trying to do my best not to cough in everyone's ear here. Um, so I'll be presenting financial status update for quarter two, twenty-twenty-four, or AB six-five four-two. Moving right into it, we've got about eleven slides in front of you today, uh, we'll go over our budget versus actuals for June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four with some comparison to the prior fiscal year, um, of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we have some language around our budget amending ordinance that contains two new appropriations for council to consider tonight, and then staff will be available for questions at the end. As a quick reminder, uh, of our accounting procedure change that the city underwent, um, starting January first, twenty-twenty-four, uh, we moved from the general accepted accounting principles or gaps, um, full accrual accounting to cash basis method as outlined by the state, uh, Washington State Auditorium's office. Um, what does this mean for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four financial status updates? Uh, really just impacts the timing of our revenue recognition, um, specifically in that January twenty-twenty-four, um, January twenty-twenty-four revenues that were accrued back to December twenty-twenty-three, um, which were already reported to council as part of our fiscal year, twenty-twenty-three year-end status update, um, and then were not reported again in quarter one of twenty-twenty-four. Um, this really does affect, or all this really does affect your year comparisons, um, this is more obvious the less months of data that we have in these financial status updates, so quarter one was the most obvious, quarter two, it's still, um, noticeable. Uh, moving through to our budget actuals, uh, this table in front of you has our general fund revenues and expenditures for twenty-twenty-four, um, through quarter two, as well as twenty-twenty-three through quarter two, uh, and then we have our twenty-twenty-four actuals compared to the amended budget. General fund revenues, uh, ended at forty-six percent of amended budget, as well within budget expectations, uh, council will notice that the nineteen-point-four million for quarter two of twenty-twenty-four was slightly lower than quarter two of twenty-twenty-three, uh, that can be directly attributed to the, uh, change in accounting procedure. Um, but we do have some revenues that are outperforming twenty-twenty-three marks, um, for general fund expenditures, uh, we came in at twenty-one-point-four million at the end of quarter two, uh, that's fifty percent of our amended budget, that's right within our budget expectations, um, we are about three-point-eight million higher than the prior fiscal year, um, some of that is attributed to, uh, inflationary costs due CPIW, uh, as well as some one-time costs associated with our E-Side Fire and Rescue Contract that were not present in twenty-twenty-three. Um, moving on to the utility funds, so for revenues in the utility funds, we ended at forty-eight percent of our amended budget in twenty-twenty-four through quarter two, uh, that really is right within budget expectations, um, and reflects the seasonality of utility revenues, uh, with our hottest months of the year happening in usually quarter three. Um, and we are higher than prior, uh, year actuals due to rate increases that took effect on January one, twenty-twenty-four for all three utility funds. As far as expenditures go, uh, I draw counsel's eyes to the comparison between quarter two of twenty-twenty-four and quarter two of twenty-twenty-three, so that fifteen-point-four million and twelve-point-four million, um, that increase of over three million, um, year over year, that really speaks to the amount of capital spending that is happening in the city right now, especially in the utility funds, uh, due to the aging infrastructure that is at the end of its useful life. Um, to call out some general fund revenues, uh, to council's attention, uh, so for sales tax revenues, if we exclude January of twenty-twenty-three, um, and have a really apples-to-apples comparison, so February through June of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four, sales tax revenues are actually up about forty-seven thousand, um, that can be attributed to inflationary impacts, as inflation has stayed relatively stagnant over that period of time, uh, and then increased activity in our retail wholesale trade sector, we have seen a slight decline in our construction sector, but that has been more than made up for, uh, in our retail and wholesale trade sector. Interest earnings are also continuing to exceed budget expectations, uh, that does come with a little bit of a caveat, uh, we expect the federal funds' target rate cut that just occurred a couple of weeks ago, um, to begin affecting our interest earnings in quarter four of this year, um, that information was taken into account for our revenue forecast moving forward. Um, as far as other city revenues go, there's really just one, uh, that we wanted to call up for council attention, is our real estate excise tax or REIT revenues. As a reminder, these are a primary resource for the street and capital improvement funds, um, and we saw a lot of volatility in this fund over the last four years, um, specifically major swings in this revenue from twenty-one to twenty-two. Uh, in twenty-twenty-one, we experienced a fifteen-year high in total sales at five-hundred-and-thirty property sales recorded, uh, and then we got the opposite side of that coin in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, um, with a thirteen-year low of total sales recorded. Um, those were the lowest numbers we've seen since two thousand and nine, uh, and we're actually seeing an even lower number of property sales through quarter two of twenty-twenty-four so far. So, that means the low market activity, or the low activity in the market continues through quarter two, twenty-twenty-four, uh, the table in front of you here is comparing the first six months of four fiscal years, so twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four, uh, we have three metrics here, our average monthly inventory for each month, our average properties sold per month, and then our total revenue for that six-month period. You can see that our average monthly inventory, uh, increased in twenty-twenty-three, um, which shows, uh, the, or which staff believes to personify a stagnant market, uh, that did decrease in twenty-twenty-four, um, our average properties sold have decreased again, uh, and then really just highlighting the total revenue, um, decline over that, over the four-year period, uh, really just highlights the volatility in this revenue source. Uh, moving to our budget amending ordinance, um, so the budget amending ordinance, uh, number twenty-four thirteen, list in detail the budget amendments resulting from prior city council actions, um, from May twenty-first of twenty-twenty-four to today's date, uh, it includes those two additional budget adjustments, um, the first one being that city council appropriate a million of unassigned fund balance in the general fund to the municipal facility replacement reserve, and of that one million, appropriate seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand from the municipal facility replacement reserve for schematic design services of the new public safety and maintenance facility. Uh, in total, this will increase the public, or the municipal facility replacement reserve, uh, over three-point-two million, and bring the public safety and maintenance building to fifty percent schematic design for city council review in the first half of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the second action is, uh, involves appropriating the city's remaining ARPA funds, which amount to roughly six-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, uh, as the council is aware, ARPA funds must be encumbered in third-party agreements before December of twenty-twenty-four and fully spent no later than December of twenty-twenty-six. The budget adjustment in front of council tonight is based on staff's recommendation to, to spend down the city's remaining ARPA funds before the end of this year on eligible projects as they come online. Uh, staff is moving forward, recommending that we move forward multiple facility-related projects that represent eligible uses of ARPA funds, so that as work is completed, staff spend down ARPA resources as invoices come due. This is a similar strategy staff has used, uh, in the past with other time-gated funds, so that dollars remain securely invested within the Mercer Island community. Staff's recommendation is that council adopt ordinance number twenty-four thirteen, amending the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four by annual budget. Staff is now available for questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, any questions on the Q-two twenty-four update or the budget amending ordinances? Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes, uh, uh, Mr. Schumacher, could we look at, I think it's slide four, that's a yes on my part, but, uh, my question derives out of that.
Let me find that for you. Is this the slide?
I don't have anything yet.
Okay. Apologies for the confusion. And that would help if I hit the share button, there we go.
Yeah, um, the, um, in both the twenty-Q-two, twenty-twenty-four actuals for expenditures under general fund and utility funds, we, we have, um, increase over twenty-four over twenty-three, and my question is, and it may not be so simple or an easy answer at this point, but, uh, I know we, we've had a number of, uh, unexpected, uh, problems, not the least of which was the city, uh, favored the twenty-four-inch, uh, uh, supply line. Um, is it possible to, to know, or provide at some later point, how much of either in those expenditure categories are due to what I, I term emergency or unforeseen expenses? No question may not be clear, so if you need some clarification, just ask.
Uh, yeah, could you, so is, so could you repeat the question and maybe clarify a little bit what you, yeah, like emergency expenditures?
The Q-two, uh, twenty-twenty-four actuals versus Q-two, twenty-twenty-three actuals in the expenditure categories for both general fund and utility funds are greater than they were, and the, the twenty-fours are greater than the twenty-threes, um, uh, which is, you know, uh, it's, my question is, do we know how much of that was results from emergency or unforeseen expenditures such as, and this may not have even fallen Q-two, I'm not sure where the money hit, uh, or having to deal with, uh, uh, the, uh, leakage in the twenty-four-inch line and a number of other unexpected, uh, things that happened that we had to deal with and deal with right now? And I don't, I'm not expecting you, this isn't trying to stump the chump, but if you don't have an answer, no, that's fine, if you could give me some idea if that's identifiable or if it's just a bad question at some reasonably short period of time, I'd appreciate it.
Matt, are you in a position to, uh, offer any thoughts on the difference between twenty-three and twenty-four, and if not, that's okay, uh, let's just note that we will follow up, uh, with the council this week or early next week to answer that question?
Yeah, as, as it pertains to emergencies, uh, Councilmember Jacobson, we can go back and take a look at that, most of the expenses related to the SPU transmission line emergency work, um, did not hit, um, before the end of June, and so, they, they most likely were accounted for after June thirtieth, uh, and so the table that we're looking at compares January to June, uh, thirtieth, uh, for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, but it's a, it's a good question, we can, we can go back and, and take a look at how much was, uh, essentially accounted for, uh, associated with the, the SPU water main break.
And if I can add one comment, then I'll shut up. The, the reason I ask the question is, is we budget going forward, are we experiencing a higher failure, unforeseen failure rate of, uh, utilities in particular, for which we ought to be reasonably reserving? And, so, you don't need to comment on that, but that's, that's where, you know, why I'm asking the question, perhaps, in a great, so, thank you.
Perfect, got it. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, um, I have a question that is really a memory test for me, which I will probably fail, uh, Mr. Schumacher, could you go to slide nine? I'm curious about the bottom sentence on there where it says, appropriate the remaining ARPA funds for facility-rated work by year-end. I thought that the actual proposal was to spend the remaining ARPA funds by year-end twenty-two, by year-end, was I incorrect?
Matt?
Sure, um, let, let me answer that, um, Councilmember Reynolds, so, um, we, uh, what is laid out in the budget amending ordinance is, um, by design, a request that council fully appropriate the remaining unappropriated ARPA funds, that amount to about six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars, so, at that, that is the, the tail end of the seven-point-two-million-dollar award, um, which we're working towards spending the entire ARPA fund award that the city of Mercer Island received in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two before the end of this year.
So we're, we're, we're approving the appropriation, but the intent is also to spend, so kind of both statements are correct, is that true?
That's correct.
Precisely.
Okay, that strikes me as wise, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Wyker?
Uh, yeah, thanks for appropriating that, uh, million bucks for the replacement reserve for the municipal facility. Um, Ben, nice work on the presentation too, I wonder if you could just speak a little bit about that whole REIT, uh, lack of revenue coming through because of the housing market that always is troubling, I know we're going to talk about it later, so if you could just set us up for a preview of coming attractions, I think we're ready to go on this.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to the forecast that we did, um, revolving around REIT revenues, um, so as far as, uh, budget expectations for twenty-twenty-four, uh, ending the year and how that really sets us up for the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six CIP plan that's coming, um, that heavily relies on REIT, um, revenues, um, we actually, it's kind of been buoyed by the average sales price of a property, uh, increasing by, by about eighteen percent in twenty-twenty-four through the first, um, first half of the year, um, so it's, even though property sales are down, uh, it really is buoyed by this average sales price going up, um, but as, as that revenue is so volatile, uh, it really does affect the fund balance we have, uh, available for, um, streets specifically and capital improvement funds going forward. Um, I know we're daylighting our CIP program tonight, uh, Matt, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, not much, uh, Ben, other than, uh, we're, we're going to go through, uh, in great detail, um, the, uh, revenue forecast on October fifteenth, um, we're, we're going to talk extensively about revenues, um, and we will go through the projections related to REIT at that time, but I, I will say that, uh, the revenue forecast is completed and, and we're projecting that, um, with what's happening with the FOMC, um, the, the Federal Reserve and the direction that they are signaling, um, with, uh, the federal funds' rate changes, that we, we, we suspect that twenty-twenty-four will mark the, the, the bottom, if you will, the floor of what's happening in the real estate market for the city of Mercer Island, the Mercer Island community, and that things will, will start to take a turn for the positive in twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six, and we'll, we'll get into more detail, uh, in a few weeks.
Okay. Uh, questions again for the six-thirty update and the budget amending ordinance, so if that's what you got, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, uh, Mr. Schumacher, could you go back to the slide that had the REIT revenues, the four-year history or whatever it was? That's the one. Um, I, I know sometimes in forecasting analysis, you exclude the sales over four million or five million or three million, I don't know what the cutoff point is, i- i- is, is that done here, and if not, I'm surprised this isn't distorted by the, the sale of the Farmers' Building and the sale of Shorewood, or did those both predate this twenty-twenty-one to twenty-four period?
No, it's a good question, Councilmember Reynolds, um, or Reynolds, thank you, uh, so for twenty-twenty-one, those sales happened in November and December of that year, um, so those revenues weren't reflected, reflected until the very end of that fiscal year, um, for the first six months, it really was just an increased activity in the market. Um, there was also an extraordinary sale in twenty-twenty-two, um, of the Paul Allen Estate, I believe that happened in the first quarter of that year, uh, it either hit in July or Jan, or June, I can't quite remember the exact date, um, but in terms of total revenue, the first half of twenty-twenty-one really was just an extraordinary year, um, we, it was a fifteen-year high, followed by, you know, a thirteen-year low, uh, I think just the dichotomy in those two years and the revenues that resulted is what this table is trying to highlight, um, and then I think there was a second part of your question, uh, could you repeat that, or did I answer everything?
I, I, I think you basically got it, I just want to confirm what you're saying, that the twenty-twenty-one number does include the effect of those the effect of those monster sales. Is that correct?
It does not. So the first, so this is for the first six months of fiscal year twenty twenty one, and those sales happened in November and December respectively of fiscal year twenty twenty one. So these, these months don't include those extraordinary sales. And twenty twenty two does not include the extraordinary sale that occurred in the first seven months of that year, I believe.
Okay. And what is the extraordinary sale cutoff? Is it three million or five million?
It's a one hundred thousand. So for a property sale, it's a hundred thousand to five million. And so it's anything above five million or anything below a hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing anything else. Council, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty four dash thirteen amending the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wyker, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Any discussion? Not seeing any. City Clerk, please call her on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB six five five zero, introduction to the preliminary twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennial budget and overview of the twenty twenty five through twenty thirty capital improvement program. Welcome Finance Director Matt Morneck, Chief Operations Jason Kinnear, and City Manager Jesse Bond.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, I am Jesse Bond, your City Manager. And tonight I am pleased to present the preliminary twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennial budget, which represents more than six months of fairly intense staff work to get to this point. My thanks to everyone involved. Council, acknowledging your great leadership and the astounding, astounding work of our finance department and staff teams, I'm pleased to say that the city is in a sound financial position heading into the next biennium, although not without some challenges, particularly in the operating budget, operating budgets, which we'll talk about at the October fifteenth City Council meeting. You know, our financial position as we look back on not just the last two years, but really the last two, four, and six years is the result of prudent investment of ARPA, ARPA funds, federal funds that we just talked about, completion of some really impressive body of major policy initiatives, including the cost allocation policy and careful, thoughtful year-over-year fiscal management and decision-making. I thank you, City Council, for your steady hand in that and your thoughtful steward of the city's finances. In just a moment, I'll be turning over this presentation to Matt Morneck, our Finance Director, who's going to walk you through the budget timeline, preview the budget document, mostly the cheat sheets, and highlight the steps ahead. By the way, this work will take us all the way through the end of the year to December, where we will, we will be anticipating adopting our budget. Before we go there, though, I, I wanted to share some comments about the focus of tonight's budget discussion, which is on the screen there, section E, the capital improvement program, which is the star of our show. In fact, we reordered our whole budget presentation. We normally start with the operating budgets, but we wanted to lead with the capital program. It is the focus of the next two years. It is really the focus of the next four years, likely. Under your leadership, again, we are poised to make these needed, very, very much needed once in a generation investments in all of our infrastructure, water, sewer, parks, roads, facilities, and more. As I was thinking about these remarks tonight, living here on Mercer Island, I know that these investments are more about, are more than just about physical improvements. They're critical to just about everything we do. They support our quality of life, they create our community, and ensure our safety. They are really essential to what makes Mercer Island such a special place to live. City Council, these comments about the future, I, I must take a moment to look back on the last two years. I was pretty rough, I think, to put it lightly. I was letting you know more times than I care to admit that we had some pretty significant issues with our infrastructure. I'm sure you're tired of fielding those calls, and I was tired of making them. The closer of City Hall was, was the big one, but we also had two significant water emergencies that occupied, you know, much of our attention and our time and, and really strained us pretty considerably. But despite all that, those, those two tough years, we responded thoughtfully and strategically, and again, did so under your leadership. After deciding to close City Hall, you directed us to begin designing a new public safety and maintenance building, and you didn't hesitate for a second. That work is underway now, and it's going to really occupy the better part of the next two years. We'll be rehousing police, maintenance, and emergency management. You also told us after the last water emergency, go design a new pipeline, and later tonight, we're going to be talking about that. Really, really, really proud of how we have pivoted under some really challenging circumstances. We're forging ahead on the important work. We're strengthening our infrastructure. And in just a moment, I'm going to show you some slides, looking back on just the last six years of investments to really hit that, that home. In closing, I have to say this. If you've been wondering what our legacy will be, this will be our legacy. This once in a generation investment in our infrastructure will be this council, the city staff, our community's legacy, not just defining our time and leadership, but the future of our community for generations to come, really decades. I'm proud to be here tonight as your City Manager. I speak on behalf of the entire staff team in sharing that we're fully prepared to tackle the challenges ahead, and that this budget and the capital improvement program that we've laid out for you tonight is a critical piece of that preparation. And with that, I will hand it over to Matt.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Matt Morneck here, your Finance Director. This slide lays out the schedule to work through the biennial budget this fall, which began with the release of the preliminary budget on Wednesday, September twenty fifth. As a reminder for the Mercer Island community, the preliminary budget is a draft policy document for the council to review, to ask questions, and provide staff guidance over the next four city council meetings. October fifteenth is the first public hearing on the budget, where staff will present the revenue forecast, the operating budget in detail, and, and recommendations for council's considerations to invest the remaining unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And so to that end, we request that questions related to revenues and, and the operating budget wait for the October fifteenth council meeting. By mid-October, we aim to have a clear understanding from the city council on how to prioritize the city's limited resources for the next two years. If it's, if it's helpful or, or required to further that discussion, we will hold an additional budget workshop on November fourth. The second and final public hearing to adopt key budget-related ordinances will be held on November nineteenth. And so we aim to adopt the biennial budget the first meeting in December. Let's get into it. So the preliminary budget, as City Manager Bond said, is built on the significant progress over the past two biennium and the culture that is shared among the council and the staff team to enhance city services and operations with each biennium. The city's current financial position is strong, and that's in part due to, like Jesse said, one-time investments and of federal funds that we, we put in public infrastructure and the city's facilities and youth and family services, as well as just seeing through major initiatives over the past two years, such as partnering with Eastside Fire and Rescue and updating the city's cost allocation policies. This work has created a bit of a tailwind as we go into the next biennium. The preliminary budget is balanced, and it sets financial and staffing resources over the next two years to accomplish the work plan goals laid out in the budget. Many of the city's primary revenues over the next two years assume moderate growth and a more, more stable economic conditions as we appear to be putting the period of high inflation behind us. We will go into more detail on revenues at the October fifteenth council meeting. But a key point I want to make here is that our focus over the next two years, like Jesse said, is, is to really see through the proposed capital improvement program and the efforts to modernize the city's facilities and infrastructure that is coming upon the end of its useful life. We're going to provide quite a bit more context later in the deck of how we're aiming to reach what will be historic levels of reinvestment. As a reminder, council, the preliminary budget document is broken into six sections, sections A through F. And our focus this evening is on introducing the budget and the capital program. We're going to cover revenues, long-term projections, and the operating budget by department on October fifteenth. Before diving into capital program, it may be helpful to begin with some context around city finances, specifically how we manage public's, the public's resources via fund accounting. As the council is well aware, the, the city's revenues vary between those that can be used on, on general services versus those that must be spent on, on very specific uses. And so the, the city separates these resources into different funds, which are distinct accounting entities based on their intended use as defined by state law and prior city council actions. The city has twenty separate funds that are divided into seven categories listed here on this slide. This slide takes those twenty respective funds and puts them into the seven categories. And so I want to briefly point out that new this year is the Development Services Fund, Fund Number Nine, and this is a special revenue fund that's related to all of the permit and development services, the revenues and expenditures associated with permit-related services that are going to now track to this fund here forward rather than to the general fund. Also, Fund Number Fourteen, the Municipal Facility Replacement Fund or Reserve. It was established in November twenty twenty three by the city council with a target funding balance of ten million dollars. This is to set aside money for the near and long-term facility costs that became readily apparent with the closure of City Hall. And so of these twenty funds, the, the highlighted funds here make up the primary financial support of the capital improvement program. And so they include certain revenues that are restricted for specific uses. Again, that's based on either state law or, or prior council action. Okay, I'd like to invite Jesse to help set the stage for the work that is being proposed in the capital improvement program.
All right. Next slide, please. Council, I recognize in talking with all of you that it's important before we look forward to look back and celebrate the work that has been accomplished. Let me turn this off here, in the capital improvement program. You know, we, we don't have a tool or a, a program that gathers all this data together and, and puts it into infographics. So Amelia Chaden, who you've met previously, has been working with our CIP team to, to take that look back over the past six years to quantify some of what we've done. And I think you're going to be pretty surprised at these infographics. I will caveat, they're still, they're still in development. I believe we've captured all of the capital projects, but there's some additional data we need to add to these figures before we publish them. So here's your preview. Next slide. Looking back on the water system over the last six years, we've invested almost twenty one million dollars. That included seventeen thousand linear feet of water main installed. I had no idea that was a number until we went back and, and did this work. You also know we constructed a new booster chlorination system, station, that was a product of the Boyle Water Advisory over ten years ago. We've been connecting households to water as well, and more recently, we've installed seventy two hundred water meters with the new AMI system preparing to go live in the next year. The next slide, please. Over that same six-year horizon, we looked back on our transportation networks, streets, pedestrian, and bicycle facilities, and I'm pleased to report that we invested almost thirteen million in a variety of projects ranging from resurfacing roads, pedestrian improvements. We're right now working pretty intensely in the town center on eighty eight curb ramps and additional improvements to biking infrastructure. Next slide, please. The sewer system, three point three million invested over the last six years. Again, really remarkable when we look at the amount of linear feet of infrastructure we've been improving and replacing. Over sixteen thousand feet of rehabilitated sewer main in that six-year period. Manhole covers, you may not realize this, or maybe you do, they get, they go bad and they go wonky and we have to replace them. During that timeframe, we've replaced one hundred and forty. We've been doing major repairs at, at pump stations. We have more work on the horizon, and we've also done five major sewer system assessments. Stormwater, the next slide is about one point six million. Again, forty seven hundred linear feet of stormwater pipe installed, eighty five new catch basins, and twenty two hundred linear feet of water core stabilization. These numbers are absolutely striking over the last six years, and I can tell you that looking ahead, we're ramping up even more. We don't yet have the data on facilities and parks, but I think when we do, you'll see the same, the same trend. Council, I'm really proud of, of your leadership and the staff work to accomplish this really remarkable suite of capital projects, and certainly excited to look ahead. So the rest of this presentation is going to focus on just that, the look ahead, and I will turn it back to Matt.
Thanks, Jesse. And so as a reminder, council, the CIP is a six-year financial plan that the staff team develops every two years to acquire, expand, or rehabilitate land, technology, or public buildings, and other major public infrastructure. As mentioned earlier, the CIP has a six-year planning horizon with emphasis on the initial two years, which is when city council appropriates city resources to complete projects over the next biennium. And so even though the CIP is revisited every two years, the plan is informed by aversion issues as they arise, observations from the staff teams that are in the field, and the city's long-range plans for maintaining critical infrastructure. And so these plans include the pros plan, the water system plan, and the transportation improvement program that was adopted by council this past June, to name a few. I just want to note a few changes that staff is proposing in the current CIP that differ from the TIP that the city council adopted in June. And so the changes are minor, but are essentially shifted sidewalk improvements that will be next to Mercerdale Park to coincide with the capital improvement project work that's being proposed in that park between twenty twenty six and twenty twenty eight. So there's some economies of scale there. The street improvements on North Mercer Way and East Mercer Way were also shifted out to better align with staff and financial resources. And the street overlay for Gallagher Hill Road was pushed back to align with the new water main transmission lines project, which the council is going to discuss later tonight. Back to the CIP, and as I mentioned earlier, the, the primary revenues that are restricted to supporting capital improvements. So this table is from the preliminary budget, and it provides just a helpful rubric of the different revenues that fund the capital program and the, and the kinds of improvements they fund. So for example, the, the parks levy that was renewed in November twenty twenty two can only be used on items listed in the levy, which include maintenance and operations of parks and open spaces, playground replacements, and forest restoration. Utility rates and the revenues that we receive from providing utilities can only be used for each respective utility. And for the next biennium, the city's secured millions in grants that will be invested in city parks and pedestrians' facilities over the next few years. In the preliminary CIP, staff is proposing a total of one hundred and six projects to receive funding over the next two years. We're going to go into more detail shortly, but this pie chart lays out the different funding sources that are going to support that program. You'll likely notice that the, the sewer and the water fund make up the bottom half of this pie chart. And so overall, a total of seventy point six million in capital improvements are being proposed over the next two years. Getting a little bit more granular here, when we discuss the kinds of investments that are proposed in the CIP, we divide these projects into eight different categories, which are, are listed here on this slide. Across all eight project categories, a total of thirty four million is being proposed in twenty twenty five and thirty six point six million. and $36.6 million in 2026. It's important to note that these figures do not include the planning, the design and engineering, and the eventual construction of the public safety and maintenance building. The pie chart, a few slides back, alluded to this, but most of the expenditures tie to the water system, the sewer conveyance system, and parks and open spaces. So this table separates out these three categories in the top three rows from the remainder of the capital program, with the resulting total budget and the number of projects funded both for 2025 and 2026. And so these project categories include some of the CIP's highest priorities and the bulk of the work in the CIP, not only for the next two years, but also where staff has been focused on and is currently seeing through significant project work. Earlier, Jesse explained that the preliminary budget is built upon the progress made over prior biennia, and this slide attempts to further this point. So since 2021, investments in the capital improvement program are projected to significantly increase by the end of 2026. And so this graph illustrates expenditure actuals from 2021 through 2023, the forecasted expenditures for 2024, and the preliminary budget that's being proposed for the capital program for 2025 and 2026. And so the bars are separated into different categories we've been discussing: water, parks and open space, sewer, and the other capital project work. Investments in the water system are projected to increase 460% by the end of 2026 compared to 2021 levels. Staff also anticipates this level investment for the sewer conveyance system. Over the same period, the level of investment in the community's parks and open spaces is projected to increase nearly sixfold. So again, these are preliminary figures, and they do not include the costs associated with a public safety and maintenance building, given that it is in the early design phase. But eventually, this is going to become a major project in the capital improvement program. Just a final point here, to see through this amount of capital investment, the city will fully spend down fund balances in the corresponding capital funds while also aggressively pursue outside funding via grants, state and federal low-interest loans, and the potential sale of limited-tax general obligation bonds. Okay, with that, I'd like to hand it over to Jason Kitner to add some color for where work is headed in the next two years.
Good evening, counsel. Jason Kitner, Chief of Operations. We'll focus, we'll talk about a number of different projects and focus areas this evening. We have a number of project managers in the background as well if there are specific questions over specific projects, but I'm going to take a few minutes to just focus on a few high-level elements within each division of our capital improvement program. As was noted earlier, we are making once-in-a-generation lifetime reinvestments in our infrastructure, in particular, really, the water utility. Jesse referenced the 2014 Boyle Water Advisory that took place. I will say, since the 2014 Boyle Water Advisory, the city, the city council, and the community have taken a broader, more diverse approach to our capital reinvestment strategies on the water side. What used to be predominantly focused on hydrants and subsanar water main replacements has diversified into booster chlorination stations, potential expansion of the emergency wells, looking at restoration of the reservoir facilities, adding a new AC main replacement program, as well as the PRV replacement program. So these are major, major initiatives that are critical to our water utility and distribution system, and critical and timely and needed to be done timely to make sure that our water system is replaced before we actually reach that failure point. So as noted here, the reinvestment of the water utility is staggered and accelerated relative to the prior years. Under the proposed projects, eight are in design and 11 will be in construction over the next two years. A reminder to the council that the project team, although we focus on the two-year budget biennium, we are constantly looking in six, 10, 15, 20-year increments for our capital reinvestment strategies. And in particular, you know, as two of the projects identified here, the PRVs, there's 85 PRVs, pressure-reducing valves, PRVs, within our distribution system, and we are prioritizing the first 20, or the most critical 20, to be replaced first and foremost. In addition, an additional capital project that was added during the last budget biennium was the replacement and expediting or replacement of our AC or asbestos cement pipe within our distribution system. This pipe in particular is known to catastrophically fail and has been problematic to increase the number of claims and water outages throughout our distribution system. So these are two key projects that have actually started during the last budget biennium and are continuing into actual construction, and again, design and construction phase for the next two to six years as well. Finally, I'll just note, as we hear shortly, we have a larger project that Jesse alluded to earlier, and that is our long-term water infrastructure response or an alternative transmission line. That's part of AB 6530 that I'll talk about in just a little bit. On the park side, again, no surprise here, our parks are treasured spaces on the island, and this community cherishes them deeply. Lutherburg Park has been the focus for many, many years, and I'm happy to report that our waterfront project is nearing the actual construction phase. Well, it's partially in construction, but the docks, the floating docks, the dock replacement is actually upon us, and we anticipate that this will be completed by 2026. This project includes over $7 million in park improvements, but I think it's important to note that $3.5 million of that $7 million is grant-funded. So a lot of the work on the parks capital side includes going after grant acquisition and grant opportunities for these types of projects. And our project team has been working for years to make sure that we are working through the permitting challenges and design challenges associated with this type of project that includes replacement of the south pier, those floating docks, new shoreline access, improving the access for hand watercraft or paddleboards, renovating that plaza area with a new restroom amenities, and then adding an outdoor classroom. It's going to be an absolutely fantastic location and area once completed, and I'm happy to report that it's nearing completion anticipated by the end of 2026. Next slide. Another key component on the parks and recreation side of the house is the replacement of our playgrounds. As councils remember, the community passed the levy to replace 15 playgrounds over the life of the levy, and the First Hill Playground, the Roanoke Playground, Dean's Children's Park, and Aubrey Davis LID Area A are all up for replacement. I'm happy to report that First Hill and Roanoke are nearing construction phases and should be under construction in the early spring. We will be ramping up the public engagement and comprehensive evaluation of the Dean's Children's Park space that we anticipate will broaden beyond just the playground, would include perhaps the picnic shelter, the restroom area, and the surrounding facilities around that playground space. And then we anticipate the Aubrey Davis LID A Park to be in the design phase in the second year of the biennium, followed by construction in 2027. These are important projects to the community. I will say, it's taken a little time to get off the ground, but that is to make sure that we are diversifying our playground equipment. We're adding additional steps along the way with our public engagement and making sure that we are installing playgrounds that are more accessible and inclusive for our community. Also tied to that levy work is the restoration work in Pioneer Park and the Anxham Open Space with our expansion of our three-year weed removal program, where we do a lot of comprehensive weed removal in year one, followed by the eradication and maintaining those new spaces in years twos and threes to really enhance the vegetation and the native trees in these open space areas. Next slide. On the sewer utility, as Matt referenced earlier, the general sewer plan is our guiding document for the sewer utility, much like we have those planning documents on the stormwater, water and park side. On the sewer side, the general sewer plan has really driven our replacement program for the capital work. Of the $9 million proposed for reinvestment, $5.4 million of that proposed in the next capital program is tied to the sewer pump stations. Council will recall that there are 17 sewer pump stations that pump our sewage around the island into the King County Treatment Facility, and these are often in unique and challenging locations near the shoreline, typically with limited space and complex, could be, could at times be complex permitting challenges associated with it. The repairs could be structural, they could also be mechanical and electrical. It depends based off the pump stations, and what we've done along the way is to do a comprehensive assessment of those pump stations to prioritize the most critical ones first and foremost. Also, on the sewer side, both on the sewer and the water side, a key capital reinvestment that's taken place for the last couple of years has been our SCADA or Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System replacement. This is our alarm and monitoring system, both in the water and sewer side of the house. In particular, just to the sewer utility, this system replacement, which is wrapping up construction, is vital to the understanding of the flows, the inflows, not flows, of the sewage that comes into our pump stations, that we can prioritize those replacements accordingly and right-size the fit for those specific pump stations. So again, it's taken some time to get to where you're at, but we are looking at a proactive long-term approach to ensuring the safe, reliable operation of our infrastructure. So that is just a highlight of the few of the capital programs that we're focusing on the next two years, two to six years. Our staff team is here to help answer specific questions, but I think it's important to note that our team works really hard to fine-tune this capital program to right-size it for the available resources, both internal and external, to get the work done. I think a big, as you've seen previously on previous slides, we've had a big push to get a lot of this capital work done, and we've been successful in doing that, and we're not, we're not going to put projects out in front of you that we can't accomplish and that we don't, the staff team don't feel are important needs to the infrastructure reinvestment. So we value the input from the city council and the community, and our staff is poised to make those once-in-a-generation level investments in our systems. So just a quick reminder on the next steps, we hear this evening on October 15th, the finance team will back in front of you talking about their forecast. We tend to have a budget workshop scheduled for November 4th if needed. We anticipate any changes will be incorporated by November 19th into that preliminary budget, where we also propose adopting the property tax levies in 2025 and NORCOM services. Then we will look to the council to hopefully adopt the budget in 2025 with the master fee schedule and the final biennial budget. We'll open up for questions. I will make one final note on the utility side of the house. The preliminary rates tied to this capital reinvestment and operational reinvestment have been presented to the utility board at the September meeting and will be continued next week at the October utility board meeting as well. Just remind the council that that sounding board is there to provide that recommended action as part of that master fee schedule. With that, we'll sort of back to the council.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, and I want to quickly just call out the grants that you talked about for Lutherburg Bank, the three and a half million. I want to make sure that we thank Senator R. Wellman, Representative Sand, Councilmember Balducci. They all worked with Jesse Bond and her team through the legislative sessions with Deputy Mayor and myself for those funding asks, and we were lucky to get those, and we appreciate that they were able to provide those funds for us. And so, counsel, I'll open it up to questions, amendments, if anybody has motions that they want to make about CIP changes, now would be the time, and I'll look for hands. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I just want to say real quick, when Jesse came to the podium, I knew it was some serious business, but, you know, I think there's a lot to say here about the incredible work that the staff has done through a lot of these challenges. To sort of give a little color, a lot of those phone calls that Jesse alluded to, they do happen, and they sort of tend to go in a normal progression, which is, hey, here's what's going on, here's our quick fix, you know, here's what we think is a short-term stability. And then where I think the staff really deserves a lot of credit is the next piece of that is always, you know, hey, here's what we think a long-term solution looks like. And I think that's where a lot of the credit goes, because it'd be very easy to leave that part out and say, hey, here's a banade we're going to put on this, and, you know, we'll kind of kick this down the road. But I think, what I've been really impressed with the last few years has been the ability to think long-term, think outside of the box, and think about, you know, these sort of generational improvements, so we're not just making a banade every couple of years. It's hard work. I mean, I've learned a lot more about water treatment than I thought I would ever know, but it goes into a lot of, you know, I think people turn their hose on, turn their faucet on, and expect clean water to come out, and it's not so easy. So I do want to, I appreciate the comments that we got about the leadership the council offered, but I think a lot of that goes to the staff, who's done an incredible job of having vision and giving us good options as to how we can really build these once-in-a-generation investments for the future.
Well said. Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, so I wanted to second Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum's comments about the thoroughness of the budget and the long-term thinking in the budget. This is where every two years, it all comes together, and we think about how are we doing and where are we going, and what do we need to do to best serve the residents of Mercer Island? And so my compliments on the budget and all the work that's gone into it. I did want to focus in particular, in particular, on the level of investment in our water system that we not only have been doing, but are thinking about doing, and the scale of what we're looking at here. As most people in the room know, most of the city's water infrastructure was built in the two decades following the opening of the first floating bridge 84 years ago, and as such, those pipes and pressure-reducing valves and other system components are all reaching their end of useful life and starting to fail at the same time, or they were starting to fail at the same time. And we've been averaging for years now about 10 or 12 water main breaks a year. There was 13 of them in 2022 and 15 in 2023. There's only been four so far in this year. So we are starting to have an impact with this heightened investment they're putting in here. And in the last biennial budget, we had set aside $26 million for the four-year period of 2025 through 2028 for the water budget. In our discussions of the last couple of years, the matter of the greater investment in our water infrastructure, I and other members of the council have expressed desire for a budget that would get us ahead of that curve of the entropy, essentially, of the aging system. And that is, we wanted a budget that would enable us to replace the aging water infrastructure faster and enabling us to replace pipes and valves, as Director Kitner was pointing out, before they fail, and thus reducing the number of water main breaks per year that the community experiences. Now, I feel very confident that the proposed biennial budget in front of us tonight will accomplish that goal. Even before the addition of the proposed Gallagher Hill Water Main Project, which I fully support, by the way, in the next four years of the water capital improvements, where I was mentioning a moment ago, that used to be the last biennial budget, we said it was $26 million, it's now $38 million. So that's, you know, 46% increase compared to what we had before, and that's using, as Director Monarch was pointing out, existing balances and grants and low-interest state loans, and also by having the option of selling LTGO bonds. And the plan equitably, if we use bonds, equitably spreads the cost over future generations of the people who are going to benefit from this reinvestment. So this is all excellent work. I do have one question, and that is about the timeline for replacing the last of the asbestos concrete pipes in the ground. I'm noticing that in our current CIP plan, that the AC pipe replacement projects are going out into 2030, and I believe I had seen the number in previous CIPs or previous years that we were targeting having the last AC pipe out of the ground, or at least abandoned in 2027. Was the timeline of this impacted by the emergency events this year or by other conscious choices that we made in forming the current CIP plan?
Councilmember Weinberg, it is, I don't know if I would call it directly. Councilmember Weinberg, it is, I don't know if I would call it directly tied to inclusion of the alternative transmission line. I think it's a combination of staff looking at the BURC plan, the schedule, the overall schedule, the rest of the capital projects identified in the capital plan. I will tell you, one, one thing to note has been, on the staff side, has been typically our construction schedule is designing year one, constructing year two, and that's been, that's been pretty consistent for many, many years. I will say, on some specific projects, there has been a little bit slightly longer lead time for the design, conclusion of design, where it maybe takes a year, year and a half rather than that first year. And so I think it more closely aligns with just the resources, the timing of the resources, rather than the actual inclusion of additional projects. It's just, it's just a matter of balancing the, the schedule out with our available engineers and project managers and available resources that we have.
Okay. And it's my understanding that for tonight, that you were looking for any changes that we might want to, that the council might want to propose to the CIP, is that correct?
That's correct. Make a motion, and we'll have a vote on it, and they will bring back that to the council.
So I, I would like to make a motion along those lines. I move that we direct the city manager to come back on October 15th with an assessment of what budgetary options we might consider for removing the last of the AC pipes prior to 2030. Let me know if you'd like me to repeat part of that.
I think I'm good, councilmember. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember Weinberg.
I guess, I realize that the plan that's been put before us, you promised that, you mentioned that you only put before us a plan that you know you can deliver, and I respect that. And so if there is a need for an additional headcount or for additional appropriation of budget, or something from that the council can help with in order to accomplish serving a, an earlier arrival date of that last AC pipe being abandoned, we'd like to at least know what those options are, and that's essentially the reason for the motion.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to still go to questions, and I have Councilmember Jacobson.
My concern about the motion is, not knowing what kind of sandwich, the size of sandwich we're going to bite, I'm not, and I'm not prepared to vote for the motion, not because I don't think it should be, we should consider accelerating that, but what impact that acceleration would have on the budget overall, or, and also what items of the CIP are going to get rearranged if necessary. Because I, I'm all for the idea of replacing the CA pipe, but not knowing where the, you know, what ripples are going to come in that pond, I have a hard time voting for this motion.
Okay. You had your hand up before the motion, was there anything else that was undermined?
Yeah, actually, there is. That is, I'm not clear on what we're talking about, about Sherwood. And that is, are we going to, we talking about replacing the existing supply line to Sherwood? Or are we talking about something more?
Councilmember.
I don't understand why we want to take on any more responsibility for Sherwood than we already have.
Yeah. Councilmember Jacobson, I think we'll pick up that conversation in detail with the next agenda item, if you'd like to hold that comment and thought.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Enderall.
Yeah, thanks. I, my question or response to the motion is just to give Jessie a minute to respond. The motion directs the city manager to do something with regard to a schedule for removal of the asbestos concrete pipe. I would like her to address whether that is feasible, accomplishable, how it might shift other, other items in priority before I could decide whether to support it or not.
Sure. I generally support the motion, and I think the way that I would approach it, coming back to you on the 15th, is actually not to rearrange the work in the next biennium, but to look two years out past that, and then think about funding and resources. I, I am concerned. I think I say this every time we have a budget conversation, we are really loaded up in the next two years. And your capital program, it does not just live within your public works department anymore. It has absolutely bled outside of that department because of the volume of work that we are undertaking. I can tell you, in the city manager's office, we're spending at least half of our time individually supporting capital projects. Finance department, same thing. So adding, adding more accelerating project and, and, you know, kind of moving projects around in the next biennium is probably not wise, especially considering the lift that went into balancing the budget for the next two years. But that doesn't mean we can't look at that, that next iteration and start talking about sequencing and additional funding. That, that is something we, that, that we could do. So I'm happy to, to have that conversation. The AC pipe is, you know, the bane of our existence. We support, definitely support as staff, the idea and the vision to try to get that out of the ground as soon as we possibly can. I think I saw Jason nodding a moment ago, so we'd be happy to come back and at least preliminary, look at those, take a look at those out years.
Okay. Thanks. That helps a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wyker.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, this feels awfully late to be having something new added to the CIP, so I would be supportive if it didn't have a huge impact on the workload now, and certainly the budget and everything that's been set up to queue this up to get it done by December. So with that, I just want to thank Matt a few years ago for having the foresight of making the budget so please easy and clear to understand with our financial plan and policies and procedures and funding the critical stuff first, and being clear about where we put surplus, if any. So, and fully appreciate the infographics on where we've been, so we can fully understand where we're going. So appreciate the idea, Ted. I'm not sure I'm supportive. I'd rather see it as part of the regular cadence of putting the budget together. So if it's very vague and not binding to city or rearranging the CIP, I could be supportive. But right now, I'm not super supportive, given the late hour and timing of, of your proposal.
Thank you. All right. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, Ted, I might have missed this, but was, is there, there's been a lot of emails the last 24 hours on some of these topics, and our book is pretty lengthy. Is there, is there a map or somewhere of a schedule that already exists in terms of when this is scheduled to be?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's in here.
There's a lot of projects, AC replacement projects in here, but I'm not, if someone could point me if there's a, an island-wide map or something of that.
Yeah, so it's in section E, between, I guess on page E7, there's the, a foldout that has the, the last section, I guess it's on page E8 and E9, is where it lists all of the water projects for, between now and 2030.
Yeah, I think he was asking for a map.
Oh, a map of where they are?
I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, what percent, with their current schedule, what percentage do we get to versus, you know, for, for the amendment you're proposing, how much further do we have to go?
I did not see one map that, or one graphic that shows a map for the entire city, although between pages E11 and E169, there's a map for each individual project.
Yeah.
Jason, I believe we have a GIS map somewhere.
Yeah, I was looking, I was trying to scroll at the same time. We have, we have, if it's not in the agenda book with the map for the locations of these pipes, we have one available that I can send following the meeting.
Yeah, so the ones that are in here, I think, are the ones that are planned in the next, that are in the plan, but whatnot, what has already been completed. So I'm just curious, what, if you sort of couple what, what you've got in the book now versus what you've done in the last couple of years, what percentage does that get us to, and sort of, how far do we have to go?
Okay, so I, the goal is to have all of the AC pipe eliminated by 2030. The original intent was to have the first batch part of, so basically identified one, one project per biennium was sort of the original roadmap. I will say, the first section of AC pipe that was scheduled to be replaced, coincidentally, is the section of AC pipe that runs parallel to the SPU transmission line that failed this year. And so, given the emergency work that's taken place, we had to do some additional design work, and that construction was slightly delayed. It's still, it's still on schedule, but slightly delayed. So if you want to think about it in sort of two-year increments, the first, the first section of the construction schedule is, is happening, call it now, and then it's going to happen over the course of the next, every two years until 2030 was the plan, was the road, original roadmap. So we can, we can certainly show you a map of, hey, here's all the AC pipe that we originally had, and we can color-code it based off the years and, and come back and send that to the council separately. We can certainly do that pretty easily.
I'm interested in that. I don't know if that needs to be a friendly amendment, but if there is a way to see that, I'd love to see that.
Dave, you're just looking for a copy, the, the schedule and the map?
Yeah.
Both? Yeah, we'll follow up with that.
All right. Councilmember Reynolds.
I just want to note, I, I heard from my fellow council members, a couple of comments that they were worried this was a late in the game change, they were reluctant to support it, not knowing what might be impacted, they were worried about tying the, the hands of the public works department. But as I understood Councilmember Weinberg's motion, he's not asking us to do this, he's asking the city manager to come up with a proposal for how we might do this, and then we would presumably have a chance to vote on it at the next meeting. So I don't think this is premature at all. And yes, we might conclude after getting that information, that it's an inappropriate project undertake, but let's take the time and get the information so we can make that decision. That's all we're asking for tonight.
Okay. I don't know if these are old hands or new hands, but I'm just going to keep going to Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes, I respectfully suggest that we, for the, that Councilmember Weinberg simply defer the consideration of this motion until our next meeting, so that the additional information, which is forthcoming, can be assembled by the staff and, and sent to us so that we can make an intelligent decision once and for all on the 15th, and not leave this thing in a state of, in my mind, suspended animation. And I think we'd all be better, all be better use of our time and the staff's time if we did that, and probably a better, quicker result.
Okay. I, I'm going to chime in just to.
Go for it.
Have a chance to comment on this. I think it's a great idea. I, I think it's not a new idea. I think the council has had this as a priority for quite a long time, and Public Works has been out there looking for every opportunity possible to abandon and replace these pipes with modern equivalents. I would suggest to the council that instead of doing something like this, that we just make it a council priority when we next update the council priorities to accelerate at every opportunity, the replacement of these AC pipes, and any other priorities that the council would like to put in. Because as we know, with the public works and the CIP, these projects move around, and they have dependencies, and accelerating one component, like all AC pipe, doesn't necessarily align with the, the other work that is being done that makes this cheaper, safer, quicker. And so I'm not going to vote for the motion, but I do support the intent, and I think that the council priorities is the place to put it. So I'll just leave it at that. Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, I, regarding the suggestion from Councilmember Jacobson, I am open to us having the discussion on the 15th, if it is more convenient for staff to have the discussion on that date. I think the, when I had asked earlier, is the, is tonight the night to get any changes in for the CIP? And I got a yes response to that, so that's why I made the motion tonight.
Well, I wouldn't feel bad about making the motion. This is the, this is the time.
No, I, I get, I know, but he was saying that he might support it if we do it on, do it on the 15th. I guess what I'm trying to get a feel for, is it better to do it now or on the 15th? Whatever would lead us to a better chance of getting the AC pipes out sooner.
So you're going to make of the motion, so you can, you know, if you want to ask the city manager to bring the information that would help support the decision and table the motion till then, you could do that.
Well, I guess a question then for the city manager. Would you prefer to have this motion made on the 15th as opposed to this evening?
Actually, let's do this. I think it would be appropriate for you to withdraw your motion. The request for more information about the program is well within the scope of what we're doing right now on the budget. I'd like to come back to you, first of all, with a map of where the remaining AC pipe exists, and the schedule for replacement, and give us a little time to share some thoughts on how we may or may not be able to accelerate that work, what that would look like. I'm still going to dig my heels in and say, I'm unlikely to recommend reshuffling the next two years. Doesn't mean we can't accelerate in the out years. If that's suitable to council, we'd be happy to put that on our list of follow-up items. And then I will remind you, next, but next meeting, you're going to be looking at your work plan. And so to Mayor Neese's point, there's probably an opportunity to, to take a look at your goals, maybe even incorporate something into our work plans as well, just to keep, keep this front and center for all of us.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're suggesting that we would withdraw the motion, but that we would still have staff come back to us with some ideas as to when we might approach this, either in the next biennium or the one afterwards, but still providing us with some options to consider.
We would be happy to do that. I think rather than spitballing it tonight, that'll give us a chance to, to share, share our thoughts and where, where to plug this in, what motion might be needed to change the work plan or goal, and, yeah.
Okay. And it's the timeline that you're thinking of having some of those options to discuss on the 15th? Are you thinking after the budget process is over, having that discussion, like in Q1 of next year?
I will not be able by the 15th to bake the cake. But I can tell you where that work might lie and how we might pursue it in the next two years. So I think we need to put this, I'm going to suggest this goes into the work plan as something, if there's council support. But again, we, we're probably doing a little bit of sausage-making here, so I, I think Jason and I are nodding our heads, we're hearing what their request is. Give us a chance to follow up on the 15th, and then the council can decide what action they may want to take then.
Okay. I, if it's all right with the person seconding the motion, I'm happy to withdraw it then.
Councilmember Reynolds.
I'm, I'm a little reluctant, because it sounds like what we're doing is withdrawing the motion so that the city manager can do what the motion asked the city manager to do, which was to come back with information on the 15th. But I'll yield to Councilmember Weinberg if that's what he wants to do.
I think we're giving her more time than that, right? So I think we, what I heard Jessie mention a moment ago is that we wouldn't be able to bake the cake by the 15th.
I, I won't be able to bake the cake before the end of the year to tell you how we accelerate the work, but what I'm telling you is, this is your moment to identify work plan items. So if that is something that you want to see happen in the next biennium, I think this should actually go in the work plan.
Okay.
But you've asked some questions tonight, several of you, about timeline, maps, that's part of what the budget process is. We're happy to bring that information back. We can follow up on this item on the 15th.
Okay. And the 15th is when we're going to be actually talking about the work plan items then?
That's correct. 15th is your operating budget, your work plan, and your revenue forecast.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm still open to withdrawing the motion if the person is seconding it, is also open to withdrawing.
He's deferred to you, so.
Yeah, no, withdraw.
Okay. City clerk, please note that the motion is withdrawn.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other amendments to the CIP? Okay. We're going to close this out. Anything, I want to just throw up onto our finance director, Matt Monnik, because, you know, there was a lot of legacy talk about once-in-a-generational infrastructure and putting in pipes and water reservoirs and pressure-reducing valves, and no mention of the ERP. This is going to be the legacy that Matt has within the organization of ripping and replacing decades-old deprecated software and replacing it with modern ERP that's going to be reporting, dashboarding, automation, just a boon for the city. Do you, do you want to make any mention of that, Matt?
Councilmember, your enthusiasm is infectious. I, I hope we can all toast to the completion of the EERP project. I, I have to be honest, Mayor Neese, we have been all things budget for the past six weeks, but we have a core member of our team, core members of our team, working tirelessly to lay the foundation to get this software implemented. It's just going to be an entirely new day. We, we can't wait to turn our attention fully to this work. We're going to be focusing on it through the rest of the year with the go-live date, with core financial components of the software going live in mid-January. And so there's going to be a Herculean effort to finish our configuration and testing, and then turning our attention to teaching all of our colleagues how to take advantage of this new software. So there's just, it couldn't be more timely. I know that there's shared enthusiasm among my colleagues, and we're, we're ready to get this work done and, and start taking advantage of this, this long-term investment.
Great. Well, thanks for that update, even though it wasn't, wasn't planned. All right. We're going to move on to our last item, next item of regular business, which is the Long-Term Water Infrastructure Response Alternatives, and we welcome back Chief Operations Jason Kinnler.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, council. I think Eli's going to share the deck. And I got to make sure my screen can see the deck as well. There we go. Correct. Again, Jason Kitterner, Chief of Operations, here this evening to talk about the long-term water infrastructure response alternatives. I can tell you, council, uh, when I took over as Public Works Director back in 2015, I didn't think I would ever be talking to you about a transmission line or replacing a transmission line and the city taking over ownership of it. But here we are this evening to talk about just that. So, uh, I've got a slide deck, about 10, 11 slides. Here's the agenda on the screen to go over, um, the Seattle Public Utilities Supply, a little background on the leak, the timeline of events and activities that have led us to this moment today. A quick look at, uh, some alternative, the alternative supply options. We will, uh, touch base on the Shorewood Apartments component of it. We'll provide a high-level planning cost estimate. Again, I remind the council, this is only a planning level number this evening. It's nothing further than that. Uh, and then talk about our next steps and, uh, a recommendation for council consideration. So with that, I think the council is very familiar with this map. We've used it a handful of times. On the screen in front of you is, uh, the supply line from Seattle Public Utilities to the city of Mercer Island. Just for reference, the map illustrates some color codes. The purple, the purple lines are Seattle Public Utility-owned pipelines. The blue is a city of Mercer Island-owned pipeline. And then the green is a private pipeline that supplies water to the Shorewood system. You'll hear me talk about different reaches later on in the future slides. So we're talking about two particular reaches, Reach 3 and Reach 4, which are specific to the Mercer Island and Seattle Public Utility wholesale contract. Again, reminder, uh, our water is fed from Seattle Public Utilities predominantly from the Cedar River watershed. It comes across the bridge in that 16-inch purple pipe at the top of the screen there that's attached to the, the bridge deck and enters into the city system at the East Mercer Boat Ramp, East Mercer Way Boat Ramp, where you see that purple and blue pipe sort of combine. And you've got a 16 and a 24. That is because there's two parallel pipes there. The 24-inch pipe is the purple pipe. That is the transmission line that feeds the reservoir facility. And that is our primary water transmission line that provides water to the event. It also provides water to the Shorewood Apartments. Shorewood is a direct customer of the Seattle Public Utilities, uh, system. And because of that, the city and Seattle Public Utilities share partial ownership and responsibility for that pipe. With just over 97% responsibility of the city in terms of costs, ongoing costs, maintenance costs and capital reinvestment costs with the final 2% change being Seattle Public Utilities. Reach 4, uh, is the section that runs down 92nd. That's a different section of pipe that enters into the reservoir facility. Again, that is 100% Seattle Public Utilities-owned infrastructure, but the costs are borne 100% to the city because that feeds directly to our distribution system. I will just make note on that 24-inch line you see there, there's a red star. That is where the April 3rd leak occurred, uh, along, just in the open space along Southeast 40th. So with that, next slide. So diving a little deeper, on April 3rd, uh, a leak from Seattle Public Utilities concrete pipe at the top of a steep slope. So you see here a map, again, that red star in the middle. You have some, uh, topographical lines down here, so you can see the slope. Just for reference, the purple line, this yellow purple line that's running horizontally along the screen, that's the Seattle Public Utility Transmission Line, that's the 24-inch line. Uh, and then the blue line just below it is the city's, uh, distribution line that runs parallel. I referenced earlier the AC pipe piece. There was a section of this pipe that was, uh, originally AC, AC pipe that was scheduled for replacement. During this response, that pipe was, uh, abandoned and closed off. And the city worked, our staff worked closely to move some of the services over to a different line so that we can completely abandon that pipe in that steep slope that's, uh, surrounded by not only the Seattle Public Utility line, but it's what's not shown on this map is two additional PSC gas lines, a high-pressure gas line and a low-pressure gas line that run between that purple line and the blue line on this map. Again, just for reference, that SPU pipeline is a 24-inch cast iron pipe, uh, installed in the mid-'50s and Seattle Public Utilities was the owner of it. On that April 20th, uh, that April 3rd date, um, due to the concern of a catastrophic failure, um, and 7,000 to 8,000 gallons worth of water gushing out of that pipe, uh, out of abundance of caution, the city did evacuate 20 homes while that, while that pipe could be shut off and the city's pipe could be shut off and abandoned. Uh, this event launched several media actions and then shown the city and our team that we need to look at some additional long-term solutions and actions, which is why we are here this evening. Just additional note, um, and we'll talk about this in the next slide here, but, uh, ongoing communications with those 20 homes that were evacuated has been a key factor of this process. We have, uh, an engineer, a geotechno engineer who is installing groundwater monitoring well and two inclinometers to monitor the slope and stability of that hillside. Now that pipe has been restored, uh, that work is scheduled for, uh, later this week. And those are the approximate locations for, uh, those sites in this area as well. Next slide. So I apologize for the, sort of, the business of this, this slide, but, um, as over the course of 120-day emergency, uh, there was a lot of work that took place behind the scenes and in the public, the public-facing side of the house as well. Uh, as we laid out the timeline to share with you, we realized that, uh, there were several key parallel timelines. Uh, and some of those, those key categories have been, and activities have been arranged on this timeline so you can see them, uh, more broadly. Well-presented, top to bottom, they're equally important between, between them. So first, when the leak occurred, we made the difficult decision, again, out of abundance of caution, to evacuate those 20 homes. Uh, as you can imagine, uh, evacu- vacuuming residents from their home creates, uh, high levels of anxiety and stress for those community members, uh, and, uh, just pure concern over what, uh, what lies ahead. And so there was immediate, um, there was immediate need for communication, ongoing communication with none of those proper owners, but also, uh, the, the broader community. And so, uh, you can see that timeline of the different community elements that took place from April to September regarding those communications. Uh, this was a tech- a technical and complex problem, uh, and our communication was, key communication was key every step of the way. The timeline for repair became clear. Uh, we quickly realized the summer demands for our backup line, that 16-inch pipe that I showed you earlier, uh, was going to be maxed out and we were going to exceed our demand threshold during the peak summer months. And so communication with the, the community to help conserve water was essential to the overall success and making sure that we, uh, maintain our system of operation throughout this emergency. In addition, the implementation of the, with our GS team to implement, implement the visualization, visualization tool to monitor our volumes within our reservoir tanks, uh, was essential. And a good communication tool that we found successful. Uh, and as we look to the blue area, uh, getting service restored was, was very, very challenging, uh, as, as you know. Our operational crews, as I noted, had to move service lines over to additional pipelines throughout this area. We had to work with SPU to create, to come up with an innovative solution that made sure that it met our contractual obligations and operational needs for our water system. And that took a number of individuals and engineering firms to confirm that that work, uh, would be successful. Happy report, as we all know, we were able to turn the water back on in August and it was successful along the way. I think it's important to know that with every emergency, it's important to step back, look at the broader picture and think about the future and how to make sure that we avoid these things in the future. Uh, and so as, as we've done that, the, uh, the green area starts to focus on some of the work that, uh, the data is, is showing that, how we can learn from the event and things that we can do to improve and possibly look at different supply lines or different transmission line that could help alleviate the risk, uh, and concern over an inaccessible pipe in a very tough geological area, uh, a tropical, tropical area in the future. So that's why we're here this evening. So with that, our next slide. So following that emergency, uh, our team quickly looked at how to improve, uh, and construct an alternate supply line. Uh, we were looking to align ownership and control with city responsibility. Again, this is tied to the capital investment discussion we talked about earlier, where it's our generational investment and building resilience, resiliency and modernizing our system to reduce the risk and improving just the quality, uh, and safe delivery of water to our community. As I know, there's, there's two reaches that are tied to this conversation. So as you see on this map here, Reach 3 is where the city is responsible for 97% and change of the overall costs. Reach 4 is 100% costs. The, the project, the alignment, the, the possible alignment of a new transmission line would abandon Reach 3, which is running from the East Mercer Way Boat Launch to the top of, essentially to the top of Gallagher Hill. And we would, uh, replace that transmission line with a new transmission line that runs along Gallagher Hill and it's the green line you see here on the map. Up Gallagher Hill and then back to the same, um, point at the top of, at the top of the hill essentially. Reach 4 is, would still technically be under SPU ownership. It's 100% the cost responsibility of the city, um, but technically Seattle Public Utilities owns that pipeline. And so, um, we would have to look at whether or not that pipe is replaced or the city takes over ownership of that pipe in the future. I think it's important to note that during this emergency and the previous emergency that happened year pre, year prior, uh, the city did supply Shorewood, the Shorewood Apartments, with an emergency enter tie to supply water to that apartment complex. And with a new proposed alignment of a new transmission line, uh, Shorewood's connection to the distribution system, the city's distribution system or as a direct customer of Seattle Public Utilities would have to be negotiated and worked out as part of the wholesale contract, um, because they are tied to the Reach 3 connection point. I will say the Shorewood piece is a, is 100% private. It is an older AC pipe as well. And as you'll see on the next slide here, the city's potential solution would eliminate that AC pipe. Let's see here. Um, so what are the benefits of the replacement moving along the Gallagher Hill or the alternative location? Again, I think first and foremost, putting a pipe that's accessible, uh, is a big win for the utility team. Our utility's operations manager is on this call and he happily tell you that pipes that are accessible are definitely preferable for, uh, ongoing maintenance and operation and emergency responses. So moving the pipe to Gallagher, the Southeast 36 and up Gallagher alignment puts it in right of way, in the right of way. There will be a portion of it that would go through the WashDOT right away. As we learned through, uh, the King County sewer project, that can be, uh, a bit of a process to undertake. We've had some early conversations with WashDOT and we think that there is a potential alignment that we can work with WashDOT to achieve. Additionally, this alignment allows us to replace, one of the upcoming AC replacement projects was in the Gallagher Hill section already. Uh, so it allows us to not only replace AC pipe, but at the same time that we're installing a new transmission line. So, uh, we can actually work within some of the draw, design parameters that were already identified for that AC pipe replacement and making sure that, uh, those pipes can fit within that location together in harmony. I think it's important to note that part of this would be, as for the, the city's process, usually when we, we construct new water mains, we abandon the existing water main in place. Again, with the abandonment of that Reach 3 segment, the Shorewood connection would have to be a discussion point, um, in terms of their future connection to either the city's distribution system or as an ongoing connection to Seattle Public Utilities. Next slide. So speaking specifically of Shorewood, there's a couple alternatives. One is the do-nothing approach. In theory, if, if the city did construct, uh, the Gallagher, the Southeast 36 and Gallagher Transmission Line, Shorewood could remain connected to the 24-inch line that was just relined as part of the emergency repair. That's not ideal. Again, that doesn't abandon, that would never, that would not abandon that, that pipe in place. However, early analysis does indicate that we could connect Shorewood via two new pipes to the city's system that are fed off of 36 and 80th, as you see here. And Shorewood, Shorewood would become a new wholesale customer of the city. So, again, we're not solving that problem today, but there are some options that we have looked at, at least from a preliminary standpoint, that are considerations for, not only our discussions of design, but also our conversations, discussion with SPU should be moved forward with, uh, this pipe alignment. So on the screen before you is just a very high-level planning cost estimate. Again, the replacement of this new transmission line, uh, would be with a ducted iron pipe that is more sizably, uh, more sizably fit for, uh, this type of wa- water main. The total estimated planning level cost estimate is just about 19 mil. Again, that's just a planning level estimate. That does include, uh, the new transmission pipe along the Southeast 36 and Gallagher alignment. That does not include replacing, uh, the rest of the Reach 4 pipe that you saw before. I think it would most likely be preferred step to perhaps negotiate ownership of that and, and figure out a replacement cycle for that pipe down the road. Staff isn't recommending we replace that right this very moment, but additional details are needed to, need to be known about that pipe before, uh, we come back to the council and, and have a full-blown recommendation. But early indications are, uh, we wouldn't replace Reach 4 at this time. Again, planning level estimates only. Next slide. So the, preliminarily, staff have included this project as included in the upcoming CIP program. So we're looking for council direction on whether to continue to include that project to construct a new 24-inch pipe, uh, new transmission line for the city. We, part of this process, staff would evaluate the optimal deliver, delivery method, possibly looking at alternative service delivery, alternative service delivery and construction methods for this project. We would obviously have to begin negotiations with SPU or Seattle Public Utilities regarding the ownership of, uh, the pipe and transfer of ownership of other reaches and bring into the conversation the Shorewood apartment conversation as part of a whole, as part of the larger overall wholesale contract with Seattle Public Utilities. Additionally, we would submit a capital funding request to the state legislature for this project. Next slide. So on the screen is the actual recommendation and the agenda file. We have a number of engineers here this evening to help talk about this as well. Uh, I sure, I'm sure I went through this quite quickly and there's lots of questions about it and we're here to answer those questions, uh, as to the best of our ability. Again, this project's not designed, these are all preliminary planning level estimates and, and preliminary alternative analysis that have been done. But, uh, in a nutshell, the proposed alignment is the one that makes the most sense and could, could be constructed in, within, feasibly within the next three years, is what we're anticipating. So with that, I will ask Eli to stop sharing the screen and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I'll turn it out to questions. Do you have a question?
I don't have a question, I have a motion when the time is right.
Okay, any, any questions from council? Councilmember Wyker.
Yeah, uh, can you talk to us a little bit more about the likelihood of getting funding from the state legislature, Jason?
Jesse?
Hi there.
I mean, knowing the headwinds are coming, there might, there'd probably be Plan B or C, right?
As, uh, the previous presentation, we have 106, uh, capital projects queued up for the next biennium in various stages of design and construction. Uh, of all the projects on the table, this one seems like it has the most potential to, uh, attract attention and potentially funding support. Ultimately though, it's going to depend on the state's fiscal position. I wanted to, I, I added that piece to the motion because I wanted to get, um, the council's authority for both myself and, uh, the mayor and deputy mayor to have early conversations with our legislators. There's a whole sequence of events that need to happen to prepare, uh, capital budget asks of the state and they start now. So that, that is, can't predict the outcome, but I think this project, uh, the magnitude, the importance of it, it's, it's the, the one that's right to make the ask for.
It's just interesting that you interpret the motion to be, uh, authority and I read the motion to be servitude.
I, I was voluntolding the mayor and deputy mayor to work on this with me.
I read a very strong volunteer in that motion. Councilmember Jacobson.
Uh, I have two completely unrelated questions. Question number one is, uh, has SPU- Question number one is, has SPU repaired or replaced the valve on, on, that's in the middle of the right of way, on, in Bellevue, that, that failed in the open position yet? And if not, is there a timeline for that? And in any event, is that something that we're on the hook for financially? The costs are up for fixing that valve. Because that valve fails, we're, we're back to spring of, or fall of twenty twenty-three, whenever we had the first failure.
Good question, Councilmember Jacobson. I will have to follow up with you on the specifics of timing for that valve replacement. My understanding is that they have not replaced that valve yet. They've been waiting for the right time, obviously, because there is an impact to us as far as the responsibility, the, the fiscal responsibility, it's broken out by the wholesale contract. I'd have to go back and look at the specific location of that valve. The city would be responsible for a portion of that. I'll have to get back to you on the specific details on what percentage, whether it's part of the Reach Three or if it's part of Reach Two. I'll have to go confirm that, but I can, let me follow up with you, get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, any other discussion? All right, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
All right, this is a long one. I move to direct staff to include the designing and construction of a new transmission line in the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty capital improvement plan, negotiate a preferred pipeline alignment and ownership from Seattle Public Utilities, identify long-term solutions to serve the Shorewood Apartments, prepare an amended wholesale service contract, and return to the city council with a recommended project funding plan. In addition, direct the city manager to prepare a capital funding request for submission to the Washington State Legislature, include this request as part of the city's twenty twenty-five legislative priorities. Further, authorize the mayor and deputy mayor to commence conversations with the state legislative representatives about this project and the corresponding capital funding request.
Second. Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Council, any discussion? Councilmember Jacobson, you have your hand up.
Yes, and my question is, during your presentation, Jason, you indicated that one of the results should we replace, and I can't remember, is Reach Three or Reach Four or both, Shorewood would become a new wholesale customer? And if, if so, how does that differ from our relationship with Shorewood at the present time, if at all?
Good question. So Shorewood, Shorewood currently is a direct customer of Seattle Public Utilities. It is possible that through a new alignment, they could become a direct customer of the city. And so as the city takes over, the city constructs a new transmission line and how they're connected, and again, this is subject to design and, and connection points, but it is possible that Shorewood becomes a direct customer of us rather than of Seattle Public Utilities, as they currently are now.
Are there, are there any advantages to a different relationship with Shorewood than it has now in terms of its water supplier?
There, I mean, there's, there could certainly be some, there's, could certainly be some advantages to it, there could also be some disadvantages to it. Part of the work that we do as part of that Shorewood evaluation would, would evaluate those different components and provide those sort of decision-making elements, because they would be tied to decision-making factors as part of the council consideration for this new alignment, as part of the project design. There's, there's certainly trade-offs to it, right? You know, the relationship that we have with Shorewood is different than the way of the relationship that Seattle Public Utilities has. They are, they are residential residents. So I mean, there's, there's a handful of sort of trade-offs that we can evaluate, both pros and, potentially pros and cons that have to be part of the decision-making discussion.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any other discussion, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, our next item of regular business has no agenda bill and is a discussion to consider adding a resolution in opposition of State Initiative Two One One Seven concerning carbon tax credit trading and State Initiative Two Zero Six Six concerning access to natural gas for Washington homes and businesses to the October fifteen city council agenda. This item was requested to be added to the agenda pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure Section Four Point Two by Councilmember Reynolds and Weinberg pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure Section Four Point Two. Our discussion tonight will be limited to whether or not to place this on the agenda for the October fifteen discussion and deliberation. And is there, is there any discussion about whether or not to place this item on the agenda? So I'll, I guess I'll turn it over to the two of you for that discussion, knowing that there's some guardrails on that. Councilmember Weinberg or Councilmember Reynolds?
I'll defer to Councilmember Reynolds. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll go first if I can and I'll, I'll attempt to, to thread the needle appropriately with the guidance given by our city attorney and I'll trust someone to jump in with an appropriate point of order if, if I fail. Without, clearly without attempting to tell anyone how they should vote, and further, I'm not going to attempt to tell the council how they should vote if this comes up on October fifteenth. I just want to note that this strikes me as an issue of some importance to the state and to the residents of Mercer Island, no matter how you feel about the initiative. I also feel that it's closely and inextricably tied to our climate action plan, which was the council adopted unanimously, as I recall, about a year ago, maybe a little bit longer, I've forgotten now. So it, it feels very appropriate for the council to take a stand on this one way or another and I would welcome the opportunity to be able to make the case for why we should take a stand and I hope to get that chance on the fifteenth.
Councilmember Andrell.
Thanks. Well, it, it seems like this item is already in violation of state law because instead of asking for a discussion to consider adding a resolution about the initiative, it is to consider adding a resolution in opposition of the initiative. And so that is already advocacy on this initiative. And so I'm highly displeased and offended by this and I think it's putting the city at legal risk with regard to using city resources with regard to taking a position on a ballot initiative or any sort of a ballot item. So I will say that I think the city should not be taking positions on ballot initiatives. I will read from a constituent who I think phrased it very well. "As a Mercer Island resident and taxpayer, I urge the council to respect the will of the voters and to refrain from stating a position on these initiatives. Besides alienating the many local residents who," paraphrasing here, "have different opinions about these initiatives, it seems out of place for a city council to be getting involved in a statewide political issues like this. I would prefer the focus to remain on our city." I had another email from another constituent, which was advocacy, and so I won't read it, but at the end it just said, "The city should butt out." And I thought that was a pretty succinct way to put it. I, I think from a policy standpoint, there are so many initiatives and ballot items that I just think we need to focus on city business. This is not city business and I am strongly opposed to even placing this item on the October fifteenth agenda for consideration, much less whatever the outcome might be on it.
Okay, same, City Attorney, Bill Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, I'd like to just address whether having this agenda item is already a violation or not. The exception to the state law that provides that the city council can adopt a resolution or vote on a motion specifically says that the city council can do so to support or to oppose. So it is proper, it's not required, but it is, it is okay for, for that word, support or oppose to be included in this agenda, agenda title as well as to be considered before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember.
I would just add that that's not what this agenda item says. It says opposition, which is advocacy. It doesn't say to consider adding a resolution to either support or oppose. So, I mean, if we need clarification, we don't deal with this issue very often. If we need clarification down the road, that's fine, but I stand by my comments.
City Attorney Parks. I heard you explain that it is okay to have the title of the resolution or the agenda item resolution being either oppose or support. Is that your, your contention?
That's correct and it is okay for you to discuss this matter because included in the exception, there's also an exception that you can talk about a ballot measure provided that it's part of the body, in this case, the city council's normal part of, normal and regular conduct of the office. And, you know, as part of your rules of procedure, it includes discussing agenda items brought by two council members for consideration at future council meetings.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, so I actually agree that we should focus on the city's business and if a ballot measure might materially impact the city's ability to complete its work plan, then I believe that the council should at least take a vote on whether to inform the voters about those impacts by voting either to support or to oppose the ballot measures.
Okay.
Well, we got a case earlier on of what, of the inability of people, of people to follow any guidelines when Ms. Rudolph and Ms. Boatsman, you know, flew in the face and violated what their express instructions from the mayor. I don't see that any of us are especially qualified to be telling people how to vote. We have ways of doing that if we want to do that on our own hook. And I don't see it's the council's job to, to jump into this briar patch because I will tell you, jumping into it, there will be negative consequences for the, for our city. And the negative consequences I'm talking about is that there are going to be a considerable number of people alienated, no matter what we do, whether we oppose or support this. And with all the stuff that we've got to do, that we've listened to tonight about all of the needs there are, we don't need, we don't need to get people, half of the population or ten percent of it upset about, well, you should have supported it, you should have opposed it, rock, troll, a lot. This is not a part of our normal and regular business because I don't recall in four years and now nine months on the city council, we've ever done this. It is a regular thing to, for city council members to, who can get together and say, hey, we'd like this issue to be considered, but never before in my time here, or in my time as a resident of Mercer Island, I'm aware of, has the city council been asked to do this. So it's not regular and normal at all and so it doesn't even fall within the exception. But we will rue the day that we did this and I don't care which side of these initiatives you happen to be on, but people are fired up about it and I doubt that anything we do is going to change it very much and change the minds of the people and nor have we evaluated what the results of the initiatives failing or passing would be. And if you read and listen to stuff, they're diametrically opposed. Some people say that if they're enacted, it's the end of the world. Some people say if they're enacted, it will cause the state to not be as aggressively taxing citizens, that, you know, there are all kinds of positions. There's nothing for us to gain in this, aside from, from some sort of idea of giving joy to people who hold our point of view. I have my point of view about it and I will talk to those people that I talk to, want to talk to, but I don't plan on doing it through the city council. I think it's a gross and serious mistake for us to do this because we operate on public trust. We are going to have to go to the ballot sooner rather than later for bonds for a new police facility, probably, or police and public works facility. We may have to do that for a pipeline project. And this ain't our business. This is not our direct business. Our business is governing this city and to step outside those guardrails is a serious, serious mistake. And those, those are my things that feel very strongly about it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, so I, I agree with points that Councilmember Jacobson and Councilmember Weinberg had just made. I do think that if there is an issue that has a significant impact on the city, I do, I do think residents would want to know what that impact would be. I think in this case, I went back and looked at Kirkland and Redmond. I believe that they, they passed their resolutions about a month ago. I don't know exactly when they started and when they sort of tasked staff with doing some evaluation. You know, we, if, we'd be doing this on a very short timeline and I think that it puts the staff in a, in a, in a bit of a pickle here and I think we've discussed pretty, pretty length already this evening, what work is ahead of us in the next few weeks here and there's a lot. You know, we wouldn't even begin to be discussing the merits of this discussion until, you know, two days after ballots already went out. And I think back to the amount of discussion that we went into when we were discussing the Parks Levy and the analysis and level of detail we went into and I imagine we would, we'd want something similar to understand implications of different initiatives before we offer a recommendation, one way or the other. I just don't, I don't, I think we're just very late to the game here, so I will not be supporting this, but I appreciate the efforts.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I'm in the same camp as Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, so I think I need a motion if we're going to move forward.
So I thought the, hold on.
This is the title, if you want to turn it into a motion.
I think I could be prepared to do it if you'd prefer, Councilmember Weinberg.
Oh yeah, yeah, go for it if you have everyone ready.
I'll be basically reading the text very close to it from item thirteen of the agenda. I would move to add a resolution in opposition of State Initiative Twenty One Seventeen concerning carbon tax credit trading and State Initiative Twenty Sixty Six concerning access to natural gas for Washington homes and businesses to the October fifteenth city council agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Any discussion? Is that a new hand, Councilmember Jacobson?
No, I was trying to get rid of the old one.
All right.
Here we go.
All right, not seeing any discussion. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Nope.
Mayor Neese.
Nay.
Councilmember Wyker.
Nay.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Nay.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Motion fails two to five.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to other business. Council, myself and Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum have consulted with the city clerk and the city manager's office regarding preferred dates provided by council members for moving the November five city council meeting and scheduling the twenty twenty-five planning session. The recommendation is to move the November five city council meeting to Monday, November four, schedule the twenty twenty-five planning session for Tuesday, February four, beginning at twelve PM, and to cancel the February eighteen twenty twenty-five city council meeting, which falls on the week of MISD midwinter break. So I'll be looking for three motions to make these changes. First, is there a motion to cancel the November five twenty twenty-four city council meeting and schedule a special meeting on Monday, November four, twenty twenty-four, beginning at five PM?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jacobson, seconded by, was that, Andrell?
Andrell.
Okay. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds. I see a thumbs up from Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
And Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Next, is there a motion to schedule the twenty twenty-five city council planning session for Tuesday, February four, twenty twenty-five, beginning at twelve PM?
So moved.
Okay, moved, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Jacobson. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Lastly, is there a motion to cancel the February eighteen city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Jacobson, seconded, was that Councilmember Andrell?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrell. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, was there any planning schedule notes or nothing on that? Okay, council member absences, anything upcoming you need to know about? Okay, council member reports, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
I have nothing to report. Councilmember Wyker.
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, Weinberg.
Yeah, so the Mercer Island Sister City Association held its annual soiree at Alister on September 22. There's already considerable excitement building for the 10th biannual student exchange scheduled to take place during spring break of 2025. And for this month's open lunch, we're going to be descending upon Pagliacci pizza at noon on Saturday, the 19th of October. As always, all are welcome. It's an open agenda, news, sports, weather, city budgets, and even the weighty topic of whether pineapple is an acceptable pizza topping. All I ask is that everybody please show respect to the chef by adding, or getting some food and/or beverage.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Andrell.
Nothing.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Well, I'll get your Jake all out and stick pens in too because utility rates meeting on Tuesday and we're going to talk about utility rates. None of which are going down or staying the same as you hopefully noted from the materials I sent out about 10 days ago or two weeks ago. But if you do have some comments on those utility rates or questions, please fire them off to me by, you know, before 5:00 o'clock on the, well, on the 8th, when that, that meeting is, takes place and so I can express whatever thoughts you have. If anybody desires that information one more time, just send me a text or an email and I'll fire off the summary sheets that I sent off once before.
Sounds good and thank you. And the next hybrid meeting of the city council is scheduled for Tuesday, October 15, 2024, at 5:00 PM. The time is now 8:11 PM. As a reminder, city council, please stay seated until the city has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thanks for joining us tonight.